Order at, it looks like 3:47 PM. Mrs. Sinclair, 3:30, I'm sorry, 4:38 shows you what I can see without my glasses. So I'm now calling the workshop to order at 4:38 PM. Mrs. Sinclair, please call the roll.
District one, Matthew Lee.
Here.
District two, Virginia Savietto.
Here.
District three, Karen Brill.
Here.
District four, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District five, Gloria Branch.
Here.
District six, Marsha Andrews.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am convening the exceptions hearing in the case of Palm Beach County's school board. It's been one of those days. Okay, also joining us for tonight's meeting are Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, and Board Clerk Tony Sinclair. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by General Counsel Sean Bernard?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Now turn the meeting, the workshops over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Brill. Well, we'll jump right in. This is our legislative priorities.
Hold off one second. I'm sorry, I've got to do the viewing information. Like I said, it's been one of those days. So viewers and listeners, if you're out there, you can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. In the event that the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the school district's website within 24 hours. And now with that, I will turn the workshop over to Mr. Burke.
Thank you. This is our Legislative Priorities Platform Development Workshop. So we have at the table Dr. Yolanda Morgan, our Chief of Staff, Ms. Rita Solnit, our federal lobbyist, and then remotely, we have Ms. Megan Fay, who you'll see on the screen there from Capital City Consulting. And I'm not sure if Mr. Ron Face is able to join us or not. Nope, he is not. But he's helped us in the background and he's always available when we need him. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Morgan.
Good afternoon. Oops. Good afternoon, board members. It is my pleasure to present to you the 2026 proposed legislative priorities for your consideration and development today. For our stakeholders who are present and virtually, I'd like to provide a brief overview of our process for the development of these priorities. Procedurally, using last year's board-approved platform priorities as a foundation, we took to updating and reviewing the included priorities. We base this on board discussion as well as direction and input from Mr. Burke and the leadership team, as well as feedback from our state and federal lobbyists. Now, the board has the opportunity to discuss these proposed priorities collectively and will guide us with any changes or updates through consensus at the workshop today. If it is determined that we need an additional board workshop to further develop these items, we'll have time on October 8th. Otherwise, the updated priorities will be considered by the board for adoption at the October 15th board meeting. With that, I will review the priorities as we normally do. After each page, I'll pause so that you have an opportunity to engage in some discussion regarding our priorities. As always, we are guided by our mission to educate, affirm, and inspire every child in an equity-embedded system. So as we're developing our priorities, we stay true to our mission statement. All right, our first and one of the most important priorities is the safety and security of our students and staff. With these priorities, we seek to increase funding for schools, for school safety enhancements, including our metal detectors, building access, hardening efforts, and any new high-quality technologies that become available. We also seek to increase funding in order to fulfill school safety staffing needs, fully fund all security requirements and new mandates, as well as recommend the posting of age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate human trafficking awareness and resource information in discreet locations throughout all middle and high schools in Florida, and finally oppose any change to Florida Statute 1003.22 regarding vaccination requirements for enrollment in Florida public schools while maintaining the existing exemptions.
Board members, if any of you have any comments? I don't see any comments, so we'll move on to the next one.
Moving on to the reason we do what we do for the benefit of our students, these priorities seek to increase the per-pupil funding for students with disabilities as well as English-language learners to close any gaps between state revenue and the actual cost of providing programs and services for these students, as well as increasing the per-pupil funding to expand our career and technical electives and programming for our high school students, as well as making new opportunities available age-appropriately based for our middle school students as well.
I don't see anybody having any comments, so we can proceed.
Okay. Also, in alignment with our student priorities is addressing the language used in the Florida Academic Scholars Award to ensure that African-American scholar programs are included in the national recognition categories, as well as funding, fully funding and maintaining the performance-based bonus funding to appropriately compensate our districts for the added cost for providing our advanced college-level instructional options to students.
You can keep going.
All right. To support our--
Actually, I wanted to chime in on that, Madam Chair.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Ferguson, you're fine. You have the floor.
That's not working again. When we were at the consortium meeting a few weeks ago, Ms. Solnit and myself, the superintendent from Pinellas represented that there had been some change in the last legislative session that makes that request moot. Basically, they expanded it to, remember that one, Ms. Solnit? So we may want to look into that because that might be moot at this point in terms of advocating for that, that recognition as it relates to the Bright Futures Scholarship Award. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right. In order to support our dedicated teachers and staff, we're also seeking to increase the teacher's salary allocation and BSA so that our school districts can increase salaries to attract more certified teachers, reduce reliance on substitute teachers, and address the salary compression for all teachers and staff, in addition to considering the additional resources that are necessary to secure quality teachers for alternative education in Title I schools. Also looking to increase funding for the expansion of school district programs that are dedicated to developing future teachers and employees in collaboration with local universities, colleges, and technical centers.
Keep going.
All right, on the financial front, looking to continue to allow the required local effort to increase commensurate with our property values, holding school districts harmless for school voucher enrollment growth that is beyond legislative projections, opposing any new funding requirement that diverts existing funds away from the school district, as well as fully funding state mandates, including safe schools, mental health, English-language learners, and exceptional student education, along with any new state mandated requirements on school districts.
Looks like we're good to keep going.
All right. In the area of curriculum and accountability, we have increasing the base student allocation to address the escalating costs of textbook adoptions, ensuring all state standards, all state standards are factually and historically accurate, as well as revising Florida Statute 1003.4283A to allow high school students with disabilities who actively participate in Special Olympics programs for two years to fulfill their one-credit physical education requirement.
Okay, keep going.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I was not advancing my slides. All right.
That's fine.
On to pre-kindergarten. We know the importance of early childhood education. We seek to fully fund a full-day, high-quality voluntary pre-kindergarten program for all students, including instruction, aftercare, and wraparound services.
Keep going.
All right, and then we have a few additional priorities that include restoring the requirement for Schools of Hope to compensate districts for services provided to Schools of Hope by the district, continuing to seek opportunities to deregulate traditional district-operated public schools, and then opposing legislation that alters school board member salaries or attempts to change the length of their term.
So now you can hold tight, Ms. Whitfield.
Thank you so much. I just had a couple of comments. I'll just make a quick comment about the vaccine one. Thank you so much for adding that one in there. I think this is crucially important for our school system. I think we should also get with the Palm Beach Medical Society and share this legislative priority with them so that they understand that we are making it one of our priorities if they are going forward with it as well. As far as the pre-K, every year I just ask that we collaborate with our Early Learning Coalition to make sure that we're in alignment with the requests that they have. So please talk to Warren Eldridge about that. The one item I was hoping to add in today under miscellaneous would be really just to be, add in some concerns about the Tri-Rail program. Many of our students do get to school on Tri-Rail. I get calls about this every year. People really do enjoy having their students on the Tri-Rail. Many people coming from South County to North County and the other way, they like this option with the cuts to Tri-Rail at the state level. I am concerned about what happens to our students and what we will have to do if that occurs and we do not have a fully functioning or functioning at the level it is now Tri-Rail system. So we would have to implement more buses and that would then be an additional cost onto the school district. So I think a piece of language in there that talks about opposing cuts to Tri-Rail, I think, would be important. And then finally, I know we have our amazing Megan online, and I wanted to see if she could talk to us a little bit about the proposed cuts to property taxes. And I know in the paperwork that I have read about property taxes, they do not directly address impact to school boards on the conversation that we're having, but there would definitely be an impact to schools. So is this an appropriate place that we should be mentioning anything along those lines? Or do you have a take on that? That would be my question through the chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, School Board Member Whitfield. So as of right now, the legislature, the governor's office, I would say that the legislature is in a posture where they are exploring some options on property taxes, but they are really waiting and deferring to the governor's office for a lead on a policy proposal. To my knowledge, and as of, you know, last week probably, we spoke with the Senate President's Office, they do not have any sort of specific, concrete suggestions on property taxes that have been proposed. I know that the governor's office is aware and is cognizant of the fact that local property taxes are a crucial funding source for K-12 education and that they know that that's something that cannot be, I would not say, it can't be messed with lightly. And so as of right now, we're kind of still waiting to see if anything actually takes place on that front. And when I say we, you know, pretty much, you know, all of us who participate in the political process, but then, you know, I know even high-level staff in the legislature are still kind of waiting to see if the governor puts forward any sort of proposal. The only other thing I would mention is that the House does have a work group underway to study property taxes, but they have not come up with any sort of concrete suggestions or proposals, to my knowledge.
So would it be beneficial to include a line on our legislative priorities? Or would we be better just to leave it off for now? What do you think?
I think you could go either way, honestly. If it's a priority of the board to say that, you know, we should, any changes to property taxes should leave school funding intact, then I think that's perfectly appropriate, knowing that it is a hot-button issue and it's something that's being looked at carefully and it is being, it is under consideration, I would say actively under consideration, but nothing really has been proposed yet.
Okay.
Since this is a workshop, what I would suggest is that we work with Ms. Fay to come up with language. We're not voting on this now. It is a workshop. We can insert it and then bring it back.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'm just going to add that I wasn't going to mention anything about it specifically unless someone else did, but I actually had added the item regarding childhood vaccines. And I just want to say that for the public that childhood vaccines are critical for the health and safety of all of our students, teachers, and the broader community. And these vaccines protect children from dangerous diseases like measles, mumps, rubella, polio, and they've been proven to be safe. I'm sure that every, almost everyone, if not everyone in this room, has had those vaccines. So ensuring that our children are vaccinated before entering school, we reduce their risk of contracting and spreading these diseases. And when a high percentage, you probably heard the word herd immunity, but when a high percentage of the population is immunized, it becomes difficult for these diseases to spread. And that means that it's also going to protect those who can't be vaccinated due to medical or religious reasons. So that was why I added that into the legislative priorities. I think that we have to keep our schools safe. And does anybody else have any comments? So now we can move on.
All right, and finally, we have our two appropriations requests, one for West Tech and one for Roosevelt Elementary School. The West Tech appropriations would be an investment in our CT welding programs as well as instructor, student scholarships to provide access to the education there. And then for Roosevelt Elementary, sorry, would be to continue on the appropriations that were provided in this last year in including the enhancements to the building as well as the opportunities for the elementary school.
Ms. Andrews is first.
First, I want to thank Superintendent Burke and everyone for all the work you've done over the years to get West Tech up and running the way it should be. And I'm inviting you all to come out to West Tech and see the programs, the students, the night programs. If you're in the area, it's a wonderful place to stop off and see what we're getting for the money. I mean, the state has always worked closely with us in funding with the appropriations. And thank you, Ms. Solnit and Capital City. You all have always fought to get West Tech up and running. It's doing great. Lots of students, lots of simulators. If you want to kind of get on the simulator and drive for the CDL Class A license, you can do that. Or you can get into the big truck, but get training. But thank you all for everything you do.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In regard to Roosevelt Elementary, I thought I heard the Chief of Staff indicate that the appropriation was to be used both for academic purposes but then also for capital improvements. Did I hear you correctly? That we're seeking to get a similar appropriation that was used, that was earmarked to be used for those two things?
Yes.
Can it be, can the appropriation be used specifically for academic programs? Or does it have to be split to some degree between academic and capital improvements?
As far as I'm aware, it is the capital improvements. But Ms. Fay, are you able to speak to that from last year?
Thank you. So I know that last year, I would have to look into which one. So last year, there was a portion of the funds that was broken out for operating. There was a portion of the funding that was broken out for capital. One was vetoed. Luckily, a much smaller amount was vetoed and the other ones remained. I would have to go back and look to see which one was which. I don't remember off the top of my head. I will caution for that reason, that just my advice after seeing what happened last year is to kind of pick one category of the other and ask for either all capital or all operations because where the governor's office looked at different line items, the legislature broke out capital expenses for the same project kind of in a different line item than operational expenses. This happened to a number of different projects. And the governor's office vetoed all of them as duplicative. And so, you know, a lot of projects lost a portion of their funding. They maintained the other portion of it. But so I would just, kind of as a lessons learned from that process last year, I would encourage the district to kind of pick one or the other when it comes to appropriations projects.
Thank you. Ms. Fay, do you remember, if you know? If you don't know, that's fine. But if you know, why is it that Roosevelt was identified, earmarked, shall we say, for this appropriation as opposed to, say, some other school in the county?
I would defer to--
I can help with that.
Sure.
Yeah.
We were approached, there was an interest within the business community and particularly Mr. Steven Ross of Related Ross. And he approached us about getting involved and to bring the request forward and it would bring also his support. His lobbyist, Mr. Ron Book, also worked alongside of Capital City on that effort.
Yep. So to Ms. Fay's point, board, I would suggest that we focus more on operational. I don't want to get too far into the weeds with you all, but we don't need any help with capital improvements at Roosevelt, particularly because there are other schools that also could use that. If it's about capital improvements, there are other schools that can use it as well. So based on Ms. Fay's recommendation, I would like to see us seek the appropriations specifically for operational things that could help with the project-based learning and arts integration because there's a correlation more toward those programs helping kids become more proficient in language, arts, and math and things of that nature versus capital improvements, painting, landscaping, things of that nature, which are important, but in my mind are a secondary or tertiary priority in that regard. So that would be my request, if you all are comfortable with that, that we follow her lead in that regard. And also, to be fair--
Excuse me, the superintendent wants to say something, then we'll go back to you.
Okay.
I was just, based on your suggestions and the comments of Ms. Fay about maybe focusing on one or the other, I'd like an opportunity to go back and work with the team on this. We'll do a little more homework as far as what was successful last session versus which, the things that got vetoed and try to position ourselves for success.
And I would say I'm in my feelings right now because Mr. Ross hired Mike McDaniel and right now, he's not doing so good for my team. So when you said that, I just started seeing red. So I had to pull myself back. But in all seriousness, I think we should work on the operational side versus the capital improvement side. But thank you, Superintendent.
Any other comments?
I just want to, before we go to next steps, I want to circle back to the abolishing property tax. If we do in fact include a line on that, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards has that item on their priorities list. And I know they sent the priorities list to all of you, so you might want to use that language or at least take a look at that language. I just wanted to remind you of that.
Before we go to Ms. Savietto, Mr. Burke, when are we bringing back the Greater Florida Consortium's priorities? Is that next week?
We'll be bringing it back in October.
I'm sorry?
October.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Savietto?
Yes, thank you. So in the past few years, there were new mandates that have been issued without additional funding. So the districts are being asked to do more with less, which puts, you know, strain, direct strain on teachers, you know, staff and classroom resources. So if there was a clarification, right, so Florida cannot continue to issue new mandates without also increasing the overall education budget. So clarifying this distinction is essential to protect our schools and ensure, you know, mandates are paired with the funding necessary to implement them successfully. So was this anywhere in the language already that I missed? Or maybe because it was just a clarification that we can do?
Yeah, so we have it in a few places. One, starting with our school safety and security, making sure that any new mandates that are doled out, that they are fully funded. And then woven through our priorities are places in which where there are new mandates or mandates are provided, that there be funding along with that.
Yeah, I see it on the school safety. Where else?
As well as students. Increasing the per-pupil funding with, when we're speaking about students with disabilities as well as English-language learners with the state revenue and the actual cost. So if there are additional mandates that require funding, it would be there. And then as well as the performance-based funding, making sure that we fully fund the, and appropriately compensate for the advanced level, our college-level instructional options. And then when, also when we are talking about the fully funding of the state mandates and that included the safe schools, mental health, English-language learners, et cetera. So there's a few spaces in which we speak to making sure that whatever mandates are there are fully funded.
And you feel that that would be strong enough for, you know, for it to maybe pass?
I believe so. I mean, asking for that full funding to support the work.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, board members? Okay, I guess we can go to the next steps.
All right, so with our next steps, if needed, we will have a legislative party workshop, too, on October 8th. And then the updated platform will be presented to the board for adoption at the October 15th board meeting, followed by your joint legislative delegation meeting on October 30th here in the boardroom. And then the legislative session actually begins January 13th, 2026, with the start of Palm Beach County Days as well on 13th to the 14th of January. And the legislative session is scheduled to end on March 13th.
Okay, so we will need that next workshop because we did suggest some changes. So we will bring this back into another workshop on October 8th. Vice Chair Andrews?
Yes, I'd just like to bring it to the board's attention. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Morgan and Ms. Solnit. You did a great job out in Royal Palm Beach, working with the Village Education Committee as well as with the Glades Career Readiness Roundtable just yesterday. And that wonderful packet that you presented to the public in both places, I just want to make sure it was about what happened in the legislature for 2025. And I want to make sure every one of these board members up here have that. Were you able to get that to them or do they have it? Because it was, the response from the public was excellent.
Absolutely. So it was actually adapted from the Capital City, excuse me, Capital City Consulting presentation that was made on May 28th, but we can absolutely disseminate it again.
Absolutely. I think when we're out in the public and we are doing this kind of work, and it was in my district, but I do want to share with my fellow board members when I see some great things happening. Thank you all for coming, but I just want them to have that document, too. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, board members, I'm going to need a motion right now to pause the workshops so that we can move to the budget, final budget adoption. Motion by Ms. Branch, second by Ms. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and thank you both very much. Okay, so with that, I'm going to call the final budget adoption meeting to order at 5:05 PM. This final budget hearing regarding, this is the final budget hearing regarding the 2025-2026 district budget, and it's now called to order at 5:05 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to listen to the public regarding the superintendent's proposed budget and the millage rates. This is not our first meeting relative to this budget. We have held four board workshops on the budget beginning in December 2024 and conducted a public hearing in July. The agenda for this meeting includes adoption of the proposed millage levies and approval of the district budget for fiscal year 2025-26. I do know that we do have a speaker who wishes to address this item, so I'm now going to call Mr. Gordon Longhauffer, President of the Classroom Teachers Association.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brill. Good evening to you and to our vice chair, Ms. Andrews, Superintendent Burke, members of the board, and honored guests. I am Gordon Longhauffer, President of the Palm Beach County Classroom Teachers Association. I'm happy to always get a chance to speak with you tonight, especially, though, you're going to adopt a budget. That's a requirement by law. So I'm not here to talk about whether to pick this one or some other version of it, but I am here to remind you of some facts that I think need to always be remembered very well. They're very salient facts to this. Due to the actions of the legislature, teachers in Palm Beach County need you to ensure that they are able to focus more energies, more of their personal energy each and every day on students and their achievement by doing what must be done to compensate them at levels that don't require them to have additional employment to pay their bills. Florida is 50th in the country in teacher salary, in average teacher salary. And even though in Palm Beach County, we know that our average salary is a bit better than what that number looks like at roughly $62,200 for base salary, over 8,500 of my colleagues in the county make less than that amount. When it comes to teachers, it's really as simple as this. Invest well in teacher pay and benefits, support them in doing their work, especially by empowering them to make great professional decisions each and every day in their classrooms, so that they can do that in the interest of their students and their student achievement. so that they can do that in the interest of their students and their student achievement. They will provide the results we all want. After all, teachers simply want a few simple things. They want to be able to pay their bills, they want to be able to take care of their family with affordable healthcare, they want to be able to take a vacation once in a while, and when it's their point in life to retire, they want to do that with dignity and respect for a job well done. I urge you to be mindful of these points always, but especially when making financial decisions for our public schools and the students we serve in them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers here today that would like to address the budget? Okay, seeing none, I will now turn this meeting over to Mr. Burke, who is going to provide a brief overview of the district's 2025-2026 budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you are two agenda items I am recommending for the millage levies and the 2025-26 district budget. These items are brought forward to comply with truth and millage legislation, and Ms. Frederick will now present the 2025-26 budget.
All right. Good evening, board members. This is the culmination of the FY26 budget development process and approval of the millage rates. There have been four budget advisory committee meetings as well as four board workshops and tentative adoption, which took place on July 30th. I want to thank the budget advisory committee members for volunteering their time as part of this process, and I also want to recognize my team. I take full credit for preparing this 389-page document, but I have to say it is my team that does all the work. So Mr. William Dufresne, he's the lead, and he's actually sitting in the audience, so I want to, I think, William. I made him come down here tonight. So Crystal Wilcom-Barther, as well as Lilly and Yakum and Samaras Malicio. So they are, work very hard throughout the process, and I wanted to make sure to recognize them because I forgot during tentative adoption. This year has been challenging, you know, more so than other years, because not only are we facing challenges with our funding, limited funding increases from the state of only 1.3% increase in per-student funding, but also an unanticipated decline in our enrollment. So we are working through those changes, staffing changes to adjust for the enrollment, and we will work through those together. But the budget tonight is being adopted, and it is a very prescriptive process. And as part of that process, we have to make sure to comply with the truth and millage requirements trim, and so I'm going to start with an overview of our property values. So in looking at the property values, we do have a 5.1% increase in our property values, but funding in Florida school districts unfortunately does not align to the increases in property values. So where you see property values increasing by 5%, our increase in per-student funding is only increasing 1.3%. The majority of the millage rate that the board is adopting tonight is set by state statute, by state law, so the board really has limited authority. There is a slight increase in the millage rate from 6.314 to 6.321. That millage rate is 4.06% greater than the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate that would be charged on that higher property value from this year in order to generate the same amount of revenue as FY25. And what does this mean to the average homeowner? For the average homeowner that doesn't have an increase in their assessed value with a taxable value of $275,000, would see an increase of $1.93. Our total budget is $5.9 billion. The majority of the budget, $3 billion, 3.2 billion, is in our general fund. You can see there's an increase of $30 million. That's primarily related to the increase in FEFP, offset by other reductions. So the total increase, it's actually a decrease from our amended budget from FY25 of $281 million. The budget highlights our general fund. All funds are balanced, but I did, I do want to make sure to clarify that the reduction in enrollment is not reflected in this budget because our revenue will not be adjusted by the state until it's projected to be the January timeframe. And so as we present our budget amendments throughout the year, the board will be amending the budget to align the budget with our updated revenue as well as our updated staffing. We are monitoring, you know, federal as well as state and local considerations, not only for FY26, but FY27 and beyond, you know, what the impact of tariffs will have on our capital program, what the impact and what's going to happen at the state level. We've talked a lot about what are the potential changes in property taxes that will have a significant impact on education funding. And then local considerations, looking at our enrollment, we saw firsthand what the enrollment volatility can look like, so we need to continue to make sure to forecast and see what continued impact we will see within our enrollment volatility over the next several years. So tonight, we have final adoption. There's two agenda items, B1 and B2, for the certification of the millage as well as the district summary budget.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mr. Burke, I'm going to move over to you to ask for you to read your recommendations.
Yes, Agenda Item B1. I recommend the board adopt a resolution determining revenues and millages levied for fiscal year 2026. This resolution by the school board of Palm Beach County, Florida, levies a total millage rate of 6.3210 mils, which raises $2,271,641,302 in local revenue. This total millage levy is made up of 3.062 mils for required local effort, 0.0110 mils for prior period hourly adjustment, 0.748 mils for discretionary operating funds, 1.500 mils for local capital improvement, and 1.000 mils for additional operating funds. This millage is 4.06% more than the rollback rate.
Okay, motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item B2. I recommend the board approve resolution and adopt the final district summary budget in the amount of $5,899,706,636. This includes the district capital plan, organizational chart, and school board statement of its organization and operations.
Okay, motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Vice Chair Andrews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll now take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now pivot back to the workshops.
Well, our next three workshops are going to be brought to us by our own Inspector General, Ms. Teresa Michael, and the Office Inspector General's attorney, Mr. Kerry High. So I will yield the floor to my partner there.
Ms. Brill?
Ms. Whitfield?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that we do have guests here to receive a presentation or proclamation in, and so I don't know if we can move that ahead.
You could make a motion, but that's part of a different meeting.
I know, I know. I just feel bad for them for three more workshops.
Yeah, I know, I see them there, too, but unfortunately, this is one of those days. Did you want to make a motion or are you going to pass on a motion?
I would like to make the motion.
Because we would have to make a motion to suspend this meeting, to open up the special meeting, to take that out of order, and then to allow us to do the presentation.
Yes.
And you're going to have to do your motion that has to do with doing that. So you got it?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I'm happy to make that motion, and it's up to you all. I just know they'll be here for an hour and a half otherwise, so I'll make that motion so that they have the opportunity to leave.
Okay, do we need her to repeat it or we're good? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Mr. Lane. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So now what we're going to do is we're now going to pivot back, and I'm going to have to go through my typical information. So give me one minute. Okay, so if nothing else, you know you have very big hearts sitting here on the dais. So I am now going to call the special meeting to order, and let me get some, a clock that I can read. I'm calling the meeting to order, a special meeting to order at 5:17 PM. The record should reflect that we still have a quorum with seven board members present. That's going to bring us right away to our proclamations. So, Mr. Superintendent, when you can get there, we'll let you read the, we're going to actually, I would suggest, are we doing both proclamations? I would suggest we do that. So we're going to start off, Mr. Superintendent, with the first one.
COM1. I recommend the board proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Okay, motion by Vice Chair Andrews, second by Ms. Savayeto. Okay, Ms. Savayeto, I know that you would like to read the proclamation.
So as a point of personal privilege, Madam Chair, I want to say a few words, and after the proclamation has been read and voted on, I request the board to present the proclamation to the Multicultural Department, and the department's executive director, Dr. Doñez, will accept on behalf of their team.
Okay, so that's fine, but you have to read the proclamation first.
And then say my words after the proclamation?
You could do your words, either, whichever way works for you tonight.
So this month, we celebrate the history, culture, and achievements of the Hispanic community. It is also time to recognize the incredible contributions of Latinos across our schools, from the students and Latinos in action to teachers, specialists, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, custodians, assistant principals, principals, and so many others who give their best every day. Although I cannot mention, I'm sorry, all the Latinos who work for the school district, I want to highlight a few that have gotten to know these past few months. Maria Baez, Executive Assistant to Superintendent Burke; Angela Santa Cruz, Board Office Assistant; Chief Academic Officer Maria Bishop; Central Region Superintendent Valerie Zuloaga Haynes; Dr. Doñez, Executive Director of Multicultural Education; Julia Cebedo from the Welcome Center; Wilda Thomas, Director of the Chalk Show Adult Education Center; and Noel Hernandez from the Adult Virtual Learning. Our dual-language programs are another powerful example of how culture and education come together, opening doors for students, honoring their heritage, and preparing them for a future full of opportunity. Hispanic Heritage Month is a reminder of the sacrifices and resilience of immigrants from every nation who come here and came here in search of a better future. Their journey inspires us to keep education at the heart of opportunity and to work together as one community to build stronger schools and brighter futures. So proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2025. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins on September 15th to celebrate the anniversary of when Nicaragua, Honduras, Costa Rica, Salvador, Guatemala became independent countries and are part of Central America, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the rich culture and traditions of Hispanic Americans whose roots go back to Mexico, Spain, and the Spanish-speaking nations of South America, Central America, and the Caribbean. And whereas we honor the contributions Hispanics have made to Palm Beach County and the school district, we highlight an important part of the rich diversity that keeps our community strong. And whereas Hispanics of every race, class, and nationality have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Palm Beach County, including the school district, in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas the Hispanic community plays a vital and integral role in shaping the present and future of Palm Beach County in businesses, education, law, science, technology, and numerous other fields. And whereas it is vital that the representation of Hispanic Latino cultures and history are infused into the curriculum to encourage the academic success of students. Now therefore, it be resolved that the superintendent and the school board of Palm Beach County to hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month, done in this 10th day of September 2025 in West Palm Beach, Florida. Muchas gracias.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, board members, this is the seventh inning stretch. You're going to go down, we'll make the presentation, we'll come back up, and then we will go to the next proclamation. Okay, Mr. Superintendent? COM2.
Okay. Sorry about that. Got off track. I recommend the board proclaim September 2025 as National Hunger Action Month.
Motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Vice Chair Andrews. Ms. Whitfield?
Thank you so much, and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me this personal privilege and for the opportunity to recognize these very important people in the room. I have served on the United Way's hunger board for my entire time here on the board, which is almost 11 years now, and in that capacity, I have been the childhood hunger chair, and we have done a lot of work with these people in the room, trying to make sure that our children are fed, not just during the school day, with our school food service department, but on the weekends as well. We work with all of the organizations in our community to try to tackle childhood hunger to make sure that no children go hungry in our community and they are ready and able to learn when they show up every morning. So it's a privilege to be able to present the hunger proclamation, and I will say, after the proclamation has been read and voted on, I request the board present the proclamation to, and I'll mention everybody that I see here, Ms. Lori George, our executive director of the United Way, Seth Bernstein, Pedro Cunha, Jamie Kendall from the Food Bank, and Polatriona and Allison Monblu from our food service department, who I am thrilled and privileged to work with all the time. Proclamation, National Hunger Action Month, September 2025. Whereas a bold countywide hunger relief plan was launched in 2015 that continues to address food insecurity and its lasting impact on individuals and families, and whereas the hunger relief plan is guided by 10 ambitious goals and driven by the collective impact and efforts of 183 partner organization and a dedicated hunger relief advisory council using the collective impact model to address hunger systemically across all communities and residents, and whereas overall food insecurity decreased from 14.2% in 2015 to 11.5% in 2024, and childhood hunger declined from 23.6% to 18.1%, and whereas the school district of Palm Beach County has worked in close partnership with the United Way of Palm Beach County and other local organizations to increase food security through vital programs such as the after-school meals program, summer break spot, the weekend backpack program, ensuring that children have access to nutritious meals year-round, and whereas the number of after-school meal program sites increased from 15 in 2015 to 196 in 2024. That's an amazing number. Whereas infrastructure and innovation has significantly expanded the county's hunger relief capacity and reduced food waste, and whereas outreach to rural communities, especially in the Glades, has expanded through initiatives such as the Tri-City Garden Project, healthy corner stores, and strategic advocacy efforts to ensure access to food and resources for all, and whereas Palm Beach County residents continue to face food insecurity, underscoring the importance of sustained programs and initiatives through action, advocacy, and innovation, now therefore it be resolved that the superintendent and the school board of Palm Beach County of Palm Beach County do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Hunger Action Month and proudly honors the 10th anniversary of the Palm Beach County Hunger Relief Plan, expressing our continued commitment to working together to ensure that each child, adult, and family in our community is food-secured, done this 10th day of September, 2025, in West Palm Beach, Florida. Thank you very much, and please come down, everyone.
Well, any further discussion? We haven't voted yet, Ms. Whitfield. Any further discussion? Well, I just want to thank you for, for representing us and for your efforts on this very important issue in our community. So, seeing no other discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and now you get your next steps in.
I know, I know. For the pink and the paparazzi. You go first, I'll go second. Thank you so much for pushing this through.
Yeah, I know, I'm glad we did. This is a good group. So, who's behind this, Whitfield? All right, now I can see all the faces. One, two, and three? One, two, three, and then Miss Whitfield.
and return to the workshop. Motion by Mr. Lane, second by Ms. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, it's back to you.
Yes, well, I will just turn it right over there to our Inspector General, Ms. Teresa Michael.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time today. We have three policies that we're presenting. We still have two more that we're working on and hope to have those within the next month or two. I think they're coming for workshop. Five years ago, when I was hired, one of the things that the Board members asked was that I align the office with best standards, with the Association of Inspector General, and also with the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation. And that's what we've done here today. We have taken our policies and aligned them with Florida statutes, 2005-5, as well as the educational statutes, the best practices as outlined by the Association of Inspector General, the recommendations that they've made through their peer review, and through the accreditation standards. So that what you're seeing is a culmination of all that, and we've also added some definitions and some clarity to some of our policies, so that we'll be able to better illustrate what we need to do and also to communicate with our stakeholders. All of the policies have gone through the Audit Committee, they have approved them and signed off on them, and this, we've also worked with the General Counsel's Office as well with district leadership, we've made some changes, and I think we've come to a pretty good place where we now have a pretty good product to bring forward. And one thing I've learned, shut up when your attorney's here and let him talk. So, I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Carrie Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board, Mr. Superintendent. We have three policies that are before you tonight. I was hoping, if it pleases the Board, to run through each of them with a slideshow and then do questions and answers, if that works, but really, it's, it's up to you. But beginning with Policy 1.091, this is our Audit Committee policy, and a little bit of levity, and I have to apologize to Board Member Branch, because she's already seen this at least three times, so if my jokes don't land tonight, whatever, it's on me. Somewhere rummaging around in the back of our brains is this fallacy that the longer I talk, the more convincing I'm going to be, so I'm going to make it really quick for you guys. So, here we go. What are the goals of these policy updates? As the Inspector General stated, we really want to better align our policies with the existing law, whether it's Florida statute or it's standards that are promulgated by the Association for Inspectors General or the Florida Commission for Law Enforcement Accreditation, making sure that we really bring those into the year 2025. As the IG stated, initially, we were an internal audit shop that converted to an Inspector's General office in 2012, and a lot of these policies, I think, were born out of some of the, the ideas that applied exclusively to audit. And so, what we're doing, you'll see through these three different policy proposals, we're looking to really bring them to, to where most other Inspector General offices are. So, the other laws include the Florida Code of Ethics, the Education Code, I mentioned this a moment ago, the Agency for Inspector General Green Book, that is, those are the standards that we are required to follow, which govern investigations, audits, reviews, and inspections. Again, we are the, the Inspector General. Additionally, the Government Accountability Office, or GAO's Yellow Book, those are the standards that our office uses to govern audits, and all of these policies are incorporating those standards to ensure that, again, our practices comply with the law. The goal is to increase effectiveness and to limit waste. Some of the, the policies, as they exist now, require prolonged repetitive actions that aren't the norm, and we believe that, again, by streamlining these policies and bringing things into conformity with the law, it'll, it'll serve us better. And most importantly, to advance the shared mission to affirm, educate, and inspire. So, here we go. First off, Policy 1.091, okay? We have added some language to enhance independence and improve procedural and substantive clarity by, number one, updating the definition for management. This came up during our Audit Committee first preview, and we have, again, added that definition. It already existed under our fraud policy, which we'll talk about later, but we incorporated that into the Audit Committee policy, and we also added a definition for OIG activities, which, again, includes those four main categories, audits, investigations, reviews, and inspections. We've reviewed, excuse me, we've removed the committee's investigative oversight of the OIG, and as I mentioned before, that's one of those things that, again, I believe was a vestige from back when we were merely an internal audit shop. Having an audit committee review investigations is not a standard practice, and that, we believe, is something that should be handled by you all, the Board. And so, you'll see in our Inspector General policy, we are moving that oversight function and that ability to, again, review and workshop investigations. We're moving that from the Audit Committee and we're placing it with you, the School Board. We clarified some of the committee's duties regarding external audits. This was made at the recommendation of our CFO, Ms. Frederick. It was well-taken. Currently, it, it basically says that we oversee external audits that are mandated by statute. We, we really shouldn't be doing that. We can coordinate, the Audit Committee can work with them, but we, we certainly don't supervise external auditors, and the Audit Committee shouldn't be doing that. And lastly, this was something that should be stricken, so I'll remove it. Just ignore that. It's been taken out of your version. All right, management, okay, this is the definition, right? Basically, we considered Audit Committee input, and what we've done is lines 11 through 13. You can take a look at those. If you have any questions, let me know. Additionally, we added a definition for OIG activities. That can be found at lines 14 through 22 in the, in the policy that's before you, the digital copy as well. Again, that aligns with our already-existing responsibilities, not only as an agency, excuse me, Inspector General, but also our responsibilities as the Administrator of CARES, which is something that's unique to this, this school district that was implemented three years ago. For additional statutory authority to implement this policy, I've cited those there as well. Some operational changes, I mentioned this before, aligning the Audit Committee's oversight to only audit-related functions, all right? And again, their role as spelled out in policy now has them reviewing and, and essentially receiving investigations before they are provided to you, and we are, we're proposing that be removed. We've, again, revised that, I think I've already said this, the language involving overseeing external auditors, we, we shouldn't do that, so hopefully, we won't have that language anymore. We've updated the charter school obligations. There were existing responsibilities involving the Audit Committee when recommending charter school renewals or terminations to align with current law. This was based on certainly input and review from the General Counsel's Office. Specifically, we incorporated language that exists in Florida statutes that involves the failure to participate in an accountability system, failure to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management due to deteriorating financial conditions or emergencies, or any material violations of law. This area of law is, is evolving, it tends to, to kind of change pretty rapidly, and this was, again, another attempt to align us with the current standards that are spelled out in statute. Fully aware, and this was brought up at Audit Committee, that absent an agreement in the charter, that a charter school be bound to our policies, all right? We fully understand that. This is something that, again, is statutorily outlined. And that really covers it for the Audit Committee policy. Are there any questions, or do you, do you mind if I keep going? Is that fine, Madam Chair?
I don't see any questions. Actually, Ms. Branch?
Correct.
Just give us a minute.
Line 239, let me get back to it. Letter D, staff support and others, the School Board will provide, will reasonably provide adequate support to discharge its responsibilities. What does that mean?
You're at line 23, is that, is that section?
239, it's under Committee Meetings, Operations, and Procedures, Administrative Matters, which is line 226, and then it's letter D on 239, paragraph?
Yeah, I see. So, it's, it's the School Board will, and we, we've stricken reasonably, is that, is that what you're asking about?
What does that whole thing mean?
Well, that, I believe I didn't write it, but I believe that part of the role is, of the Audit Committee, is to serve as the conduit with the School Board to ensure that the Audit Committee is receiving the support that it needs, needs to be able to meet these responsibilities and duties.
So, reasonably is stricken because?
It's one of those mushy legal terms that, I don't know who applies that definition. I can extend it to my fellow esquires who, who are on the Board, but it was really one of those things where, rather than kind of getting into what the meaning of reasonable is, we felt like, as spelling out duties and obligations to the committee, it, it should be to provide adequate support. Again, it was, it was one of those things, just cleaning up the language and, and trying to, trying to add clarity.
Okay, and then, number seven, line 271, access to personnel and documents?
Yes.
The stricken part where it says, OIG has unrestricted instead of reasonable? Why is that?
Well, unrestricted was there previously.
Right.
It said unrestricted, reasonable access, and, and what we found is that, again, utilization of the term reasonable, who, who is the objective definer of that term? And more importantly, there are certain instances where, when the IG needs access to information, whether it's through an audit or an investigation, we oftentimes have to remind people that we should be able to get that information post haste, particularly if it's something that involves district property or, or, again, a district facility. And there's different instances where we haven't had yet, this yet arise, but one person's definition of reasonable, well, we'll meet you at 11:00 a.m., and we say, no, we'd like to meet you when school begins at 7:30. And, and to avoid that, again, definition of reasonable, we just stuck with the unrestricted access.
I think unrestricted is though, like, somebody has to stop everything they're doing to give you what you want.
And that was already there to begin with. So, that, again, that's, just so you know, the new language is...
Picking out the reasonable, though, is, now it's just unrestricted.
It's unrestricted, reasonable, I, I just, we, we didn't know what that meant, frankly. I, I would have never proposed that to begin with, because it's one of those things where if, when we get to 1.092 and the duties and obligations of the Inspector General, whether it's audits or investigations, the ability to have that unrestricted access is something...
So, what is your definition of unrestricted? Stop what you're doing and give me your information?
I mean, I wouldn't say it like that.
Or no, but I mean, when you say unrestricted, it kind of looks like that.
Right, yeah, without roadblocks, I would say, without i- impediment. Part of, what we'll talk about in the next, uh, policy proposal involves this concept of independence, and it's one of the things that our, our investigators and auditors, and I think this is common to, to anyone that's in our line of work, when they encounter certain folks who may be the subject of an audit, or an auditee, or the subject of investigation, they don't, or witness even, they don't feel, I, I talked to my manager first before I gave this to you, I have to make sure that I'm, I'm getting my, you know...
Which I could understand that, actually.
It makes sense, but that's why we have these policies that, that kind of spell out, hey, we get it under most circumstances, but because the Inspector General is independent and because our role is unique, we, you know, that's, that's, that, that, the lack of restriction, I think, is one of the, it really goes to the heart of what our purpose and mission is.
Thank you.
Okay, so, before I call on Mr. Ferguson, I was actually going to say that the policy doesn't say immediate, immediate access to, so I would never expect anyone to give immediate access to anything in the district because it's just physically impossible.
Right, right.
Mr. Ferguson?
That was the point I was going to make, so I don't have anything to add.
We're thinking alike, then we'll go to Ms. Savayeto.
I have a question. So, if you can educate me, the IG reviews anything that could happen from the Superintendent and below, like all the employees, when it comes to...
Yes, we have oversight as far as compliance over everybody except for the people up on that dais, so, everybody else, we have oversight over, and it's essentially...
And why is, and why is that?
Why is that?
Right, because...
Because Inspector Generals provide oversight as far as compliance to ensure you, we are your internal affairs, we are your internal auditors.
So, if you had one of us here, per se, that, you know, didn't comply?
Why?
Didn't live in the district, you know, things like that, that has happened before, and it happens a lot with elected officials, you know, that they claim to live in a place and they don't, and so, who takes care of that?
Right, well, if, that's an independence issue. That, what it has seen is that if I try to investigate or audit my bosses, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be independent, I'm going to have some concern that my next evaluation may not be so good if I, you know, findings against each one of the, the Board members. So, there's this established procedure in which those are sent out to an independent entity to look at, and that's basically covered in the next policy. And the same thing for anybody in my office, if there's an accusation against myself or any of my staff, that goes to an outside entity. I can't investigate my own people, I, I would not be considered objective in that. And as far as the Superintendent and the General Counsel, that, my understanding for that one is that they, nobody wants the ability or the thought that the Board could try to utilize me or my position to go after the General Counsel or their Superintendent if they weren't, if, if there was some problems. So, and it also makes it a little bit easier for me, because when I deal with them, they don't have, they can tell me, no, I'm not going to do that, and there's no concern that, you know, I can turn around and, and investigate them. So, I have a very good relationship with that.
So, when he goes outside, then what happens? I mean, it's just a report is brought back to your office?
Right, so, in, in the next policy, we go through the whole process, and, and that process, we're mirroring what both the BAR does as well as the State Ethics Commission. So, there's an affidavit that, that you fill out, it shows, you know, you have to claim certain things, and you have to have firsthand knowledge, you can't have hearsay because that's written in statute, and once we get that information... And once we get that information, we give it to one of the investigators that we have, there's, we have a whole listing of different law firms that we utilize. They investigate it, they bring the report back, and then we give it to the board.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, we also have an interlocal agreement with the Pinellas County Clerk Inspector General, and they also would serve in that, that conflict investigator capacity.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so we don't have any other questions, you can keep going.
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. All right, moving on, board policy 1.092, and this is the inspector general policy, and dovetail nicely to some of the questions that were asked before. So what are some of the key changes? Again, we are really looking to align our policies here in the district with, with state statute and internal standards, standards for internal inspector general, to enhance independence, increase accountability, and provide procedural and substantive clarity. We've added a lot of new definitions, as you can see, and part of that is, has been lessons learned through past audits and investigations, and even through this, you know, policymaking process, understanding that we needed to define things better and to add clarity. And so, again, we've added a number of definitions. We've also articulated a more clearly defined process, as Ms. Savietto was just asking about, for those conflict complaints, that's a new term that we're defining, that relates to any complaint that's brought against someone sitting up in the dais, as the inspector general said. We're also working on aligning due process rights, again, with the current statutes, and that's seen not only through definitions, but also through the process of reporting our findings, right? And really the way in which we administrate our big four, right? Our investigations, audits, reviews, and inspections. And then lastly, we have added language to increase accessibility to and cooperation with the OIG, and that involves the subpoena powers. So what are some of the definitions that we've added? I'm going to give you the kind of 5,000-foot view, and we can obviously dig in later if you want, but defining conflict subjects and conflict free investigators, excuse me. We've renamed them, originally the name that we used was conflict-free agency, I believe, and that really was a misnomer, I think it was applied because that, or maybe it was external conflict agency, rather, that's what we're striking. I think that was mainly just because it was a reference to the inspector general for Pinellas County, but we don't only have to have agencies serving in that conflict investigator position, it can also be lawyers and law firms, if they're qualified and well-versed in those standards that I shared with you before. We've also, again, added the definition conflict subject to define all the people up in the dais, but it's a little more sophisticated than just people that sit on the dais. We've also added these definitions, and these are directly from statute. You'll see that these are not new terms that we created from whole cloth, I kind of think, and I think general counsel, Patricia Morales might agree, they are kind of clumsily worded, but these are the terms that were utilized by the state, just statute 20.055, state, internal inspectors general, they define these terms, entities contracting with the board, and individuals substantially affected. And essentially what those are is that's anyone who is outside of the purview of this district. Again, whether that's a vendor, whether that's someone who, again, has come on as a volunteer, if we do have an investigation or we engage in an audit with them, we need to give them proper due process, and that's why we've added these terms. Independence, this, this term we've added because it's come up in a lot of our discussions, it's been updated to emphasize this freedom from personal and external impairments for the inspector general and all OIG employees. This definition was crafted from the AIG principles that are articulated in the Green Book, right? And they don't just say independence means this, they have different flavors of independence, basically, but we took those and we put them all together so that, so that it better articulates what, what we say when we mean independence. An external entity, that's anyone, okay, that really, excuse me, anything or anyone that is non-district that could be subpoenaed pursuant to our proposed subpoena language, right? And the reason we put that in there is because we do not intend to subpoena our own employees, right? We do not intend to be ordering our folks to turn things over to us, that applies to those folks that are outside, whether it's, again, it's a vendor who is not contracted with us, whether it's a platform for social media, or a payment processor for crowdfunding, those would be the types of external entities that we contemplated. OIG activities, this is, again, a definition that really spells out all of our duties that we maintain and that we're responsible for meeting. This was requested by the audit committee, and it was constructed based on that. It includes, again, the responsibilities through cares, as well as the responsibilities that come from statutory mandate to develop policies for the investigation of misconduct. And again, that's statute 1,001, 42, parent seven, parent B, section three. Misconduct, okay? That's been sort of a tough one to define, we were met with some scratching heads when we started rolling out cares and discussing misconduct, so we decided to utilize the definition that's provided by the Florida Department of Education, right? We've built that in, as well as their sub-agency, PPS, the Office of Professional Practices. There's a great website that's out there that really spells out what constitutes educator misconduct, and so we utilize that as a starting point to define misconduct. And we believe that extends beyond just educators, because even our, you know, other rank and file, or other managers could be alleged to have committed or engaged in misconduct. Non-misconduct complaint, this was to basically say, what isn't misconduct, right? And that would be something that we said, really, it doesn't rise to the violation of law, policy, or other governing directive. We get a lot of complaints through cares where someone will be really unhappy with a performance evaluation, right? Or we'll have parents that will call and say that the bus is running late, and that's something that they are, again, rightfully upset about, but it doesn't constitute misconduct. So, the example that I used here is that what if someone said that the inspector general is really alphabuthrop, and her staff are flying monkeys? That might be a problem, but we would, we certainly wouldn't call that a misconduct complaint. Don't everyone laugh at one time? All right, so here we go. Internal procedures for draft reports, Ms. Branch, it didn't go over well. All right, so what are some of the operational changes, right? Here's what we're doing, okay, to, again, better comply with Florida law, right? We're basically limiting responses to draft reports to only those entities contracting with the board and the individuals substantially affected. This is, again, a big sort of, I'll call it a hiccup, a mistake, whatever, that existed in the original policy that we really needed to clarify. It does contribute to a great deal of waste, and in many times, a lack of, I'll say, a lack of due process, or it impinges due process. Wise man once said that justice delayed is justice denied, Dr. J. And what we're looking to do is, again, avoid that, and we know that, again, those folks who don't have an independent right to review, those external folks, they would need a right to comment and engage, whereas our employees, they have an enormous amount of protection, there's no reason this process should be drawn out, drawn out, based on the due process rights they have as employees. Increased compliance with existing policies, we've increased cooperation from external entities through the establishment of subpoena power. This is, and I'll say it quite proudly, I learned that this is one of the trifecta for the gold standard for an inspector general's office. And we've got, right now, two out of the three. We have an independent budget, right, which is not subsumed, independent on other people basically telling you, here's what we'll give you, this is what you have to work with. We have an IG who has a fixed-term contract with a for-cause termination provision, meaning this, the IG can't be removed simply because somebody doesn't like the fact that she made a finding they didn't agree with. And then lastly, the agency, excuse me, the Association for Inspectors General says that subpoena power, that that's the third thing they really shoot for. In our most recent peer review, they encouraged us strongly to pursue this, because it, again, it will help us to be more effective in meeting our mission, and then we, again, we look forward to you all hopefully putting this into policy. The language that I've utilized comes directly from the Palm Beach County Inspector General, they currently have that administrative subpoena authority, and I really, I got to give credit where credit is due, I just kind of did a little cut and paste, tweaked it a little bit, and basically that's what we're looking for. Lastly, no tolerance, this is that piece of paper that was provided, Ms. Sinclair dropped it off for you all, that language is not included in the digital copies, but after going back and forth with the general counsel's office and really kind of talking through this, we as an office wanted and needed to adopt a standard for our employees as it relates to any potential violations of the code of ethics. And what we've put together, it's a lot longer than the original version that you all saw, it doesn't use the term zero tolerance, but it really spells out this notion that, while no one's perfect, as an inspector general, as somebody charged with being the watchdog, we expect our folks to be as close to above reproach as we can. And so that's what it spells out, it's something basically saying that if one of our employees is found to have violated the code of ethics and it is substantiated, that it will be addressed. That's, that's the goal, I think that, I think that we owe that to the public as, as the district's designated watchdog. So that's the, that's fresh language, though, just so you're aware, that's not in the digital copy, it's what we printed up before, based on input from the other smart lawyers. Cares administration, this is something that, again, I'm going to reference him one more time, I hope Dr. Johnson's listening. We're removing from the cares provision, we're striking the language that relates to failure to report to cares being a basis for discipline. This was something that, and I'll own it, when we were drafting the cares policy, we put this in at the advice of some folks in human resources, it's standard language, but for the IG to be talking about discipline, which is so far beyond our role, it's created a lot of consternation, and I think it needs to be taken out, because it never belonged there to begin with, that's really all I can say. So it's inappropriate, and so hopefully you all will support that. As far as board workshops, I mentioned this before, the audit committee policy, because we're removing that investigation oversight from the audit committee, we want to be able to give you all the opportunity to publicly review and discuss one of our investigations, that final workshop discussion, public forum, should rest with you all, and that's what we're looking to do. So it's harmonizing that provision to remove it from the audit committee and now place that responsibility with the board. I don't know that you all will choose to exercise that, but it certainly is something, if there is a matter of great public importance, or if there's something that comes down that the IG, or conversely, a member of the folks in the dais wants to present, it should be handled that way. Lastly, the OIG is not administration, we've said that a lot for a really long time and kind of didn't really sink in, but we aren't, and we've actually got a new definition, again, this was pulled right from Florida statute, we are, we are not administrators, never have been, we shouldn't be, okay? We are educational support staff, we are folks that support the mission, we support the educators. So we're looking to, again, update that as well. Lastly, this is at 1.092 sub seven, the conflicts, right, involving the folks in the dais, we've implemented, based on what's utilized by not only the Florida Commission on Ethics, but also the Florida Election Commission, a process where if you bring forward a complaint against one of the big three, or big four, rather, anyone sitting in this dais, you basically have to present something that is specific enough, that is focused and precise enough to allow for a conflict investigator to take action. And the way that we've done that is, again, by looking at the models provided by those other agencies, and building them into an actual form. That form, I believe, has been provided to you all, I didn't do it in red, it's in all black, but just understand that's a brand-new form, that, again, it requires the complainant or prospective complainant to basically sign under oath, that these are the allegations, these are the potential violations we believe are happening, and, and we are prepared to cooperate so that you can conduct a meaningful investigation, and that's, that's what that form does. We've also added a point of contact provision, so that way there will be someone designated who is responsible for merely ensuring that, once a complaint, if it does meet all the requirements, if it is referred to a conflict investigator, that point of contact will be there to assist, not in the investigation, but to assist in any administrative obligations that arise out of that, such as providing workspace, such as providing, you know, contact information, or what's the best way for me to get emails, who do I talk to in IT, you know, being able to facilitate that, but certainly not pulling any emails, certainly not doing any investigative work. That was something that was grossly lacking, is lacking from the existing policy. And that covers all of 1.092.
Ms. Whitfield?
Thank you, I just wanted to ask about, on line 673, you talk about the external entities, hold on, I have to find it again, the external entities having 10 days to report back to you, first of all, is 10 days like an industry standard, or is there a reason why, 10 days seems fast to me, to be able to go straight to subpoena after 10 days?
Here's what I could tell you, is, that is the existing standard that was already in policy, it was actually shifted up, so that was something that was adopted by the board, perhaps, before you were here, when the office was set up. Here's what I'll tell you, when we bump up against that 10-day deadline now, we normally say, hey, what's going on? Where's the stuff? And most of the time, these external entities are saying, hey, we're working on it, we'll get it to you, so we are able to work within that 10-day timeframe, it's never presented a problem, if someone says, hey, we're working on it. When we look at somebody who's been totally silent and isn't responding, or more likely than not, with these external entities that we may be subpoenaing, administratively subpoenaing records from, they'll say, look, we'd love to give it to you, but without a subpoena, we can't. So that's where that gets in, I know that doesn't fully answer your 10-day question, but-
No, it does, I just wonder if maybe what we should be doing is putting in the policy that, because subpoenas seem like a lot of paperwork, and a lot of people running around to just check in with someone. So I'm wondering if we should push that back before you go straight to subpoena policy, to maybe 30 days, and 10 days, you guys can still check at 10 days, you can-
And I think that's what we, that's what we do now, but I also feel that reminding people, like, especially when we make an initial records request, by policy, you have 10 days, 10 working days, I believe, so it's actually probably closer to, you know, two weeks, to respond. That definitely gives, right out of the gate, if it's somebody who's not going to require a subpoena, that sense of urgency, and like I said, I don't know where, it's a nice round number, I don't know where it came from, but we certainly, it looks as though that's new language, but really that's language that's just been moved, it was previously, I think, in the due process section.
I think 30 would make more sense, I'll put it out to the board members to, you know, weigh in, I just think 10 days is quick.
Okay, so I'll weigh in first, I think we should stick with the 10 days, I think that we really, I think people should respond within that amount of time, and I would say that if they needed an extension, I imagine that they could ask for that, but 30 days is way too much time to give somebody to respond, and how anybody else feels about it? I see Mr. Lane is shaking his head that he agrees. Mr. Ferguson, I saw your hand go up.
I think 10, 10 working days, as council representative, that's roughly two weeks, 15 days, so that's, that's a reasonable amount of time in litigation, in the litigation world, I think 30, particularly when you have persons who may be evasive, can morph into 60, and my understanding is that sometimes evidence will tend to dissipate the longer you let it linger, so in that regard, for them to be, your words, not mine, the watchdog, oof, oof, and yeah, I think 10 working days would be good.
So Ms. Whitfield, those were our two attorneys sitting on the board, so if you're comfortable with that, we'll keep it the way it is, and are you, are you finished? Okay, so then we'll go to Ms. Branch.
Thank you. Line 215, it says, number one.
Yes.
Neither the inspector general nor any employee of the office of the IG shall engage in board members' political campaigns or campaign activities of the school board, and shall not make financial contributions to any such campaign. Should we add in there anyone running for office also for school board?
Oh.
Because that's kind of-
That, we'll leave that, that would certainly address the ethical concern that I believe with the intent behind this.
I don't know how-
So it doesn't necessarily have to be an incumbent board member, but a candidate for-
Right.
I think that makes sense.
Makes a lot of sense, yeah, very good point.
And then my other, on that same, is the audit committee, the voting members are also held to sunshine, should they be included in that?
As folks who we can't-
Can't.
Make financial contributions to, or-
I can't engage any board members or potential board, political campaigns, activities of the school board, or potential members, or any financial contributions, because that's ethical and sunshine.
Certainly, it certainly makes sense, I think that-
I don't, I don't-
Well, yeah.
That's not, that's not contemporary. Not jumping on that-
And I was actually going to say the same thing, I'll let you go first if you want, but I was just going to say that the people we appoint to committees are people that we know professionally, and so I, you know, I think that, you know, I would, I would not agree that they shouldn't be able to do something, because they're people that are involved-
They also are voting and held to sunshine, yet they meet with board members and really shouldn't do that, so. I mean, if a board member, I think we have ethics policy 3.02, if a board member gets involved in a campaign, that's- involved in a campaign, that violates that.
Yeah. I understand your position, and really, it's sort of at the, I think it's the discretion of the Board. This would be one of those things that...
Because that's not something I would really be concerned about, but I don't. So counsel, what is your understanding of what Board Member Branch just said?
I think that, can I maybe present a hypothetical?
Yeah, sure.
Could present an ethical pitfall would possibly be if we have, let's say, this is not ever going to happen, I don't think, but let's say we have a member of the Audit Committee who decides they're going to run for public office, and then would come to us, because we work with them, soliciting either campaign contributions, or would you like to volunteer on my campaign? Whether they're running, I think for the Board, it would solve the proposal you've just made.
Not that they're running, but the voting members being involved in campaigns and raising money for people that are running, or that are...
Oh.
Yeah, so they're held to sunshine.
I misunderstood.
So like, any voting member, I'm putting this out there, any voting member, because they're held to sunshine and really shouldn't be talking and be involved in campaigns and contributing money, and, I mean, to me, that's big sunshine.
Sunshine relates to the business of the government body, so that's not the same. I'd agree that someone who might potentially be a Board member creates a conflict for you. You definitely don't want them getting involved with doling out donations, because they would be your bar. I could see that, but if myself or one of the other Board members appoints, you know, Papa Smurf to the Audit Committee, and we've known each other for however long, and he or she has donated to a Board member in the past, I don't, I'm not as concerned about that. I would be concerned with where I thought Board Member Branch was going initially, which is the first issue where a prospective candidate.
Right, yeah, that's...
That would be a concern, for sure.
I don't know that...
So it's the, any Inspector General or office, or employee of the Office of Inspector General, and any voting member of the Audit, because couldn't that be a conflict?
No.
Because they're under sunshine? If they're involved in a campaign?
I'm going to ask General Counsel to weigh in on that.
Yes. I don't think so, because the obligations of an Audit Committee member are not the same as the obligations of the employees, in particular...
But they're held to sunshine, correct?
They are held to sunshine for their meetings.
Right, right, right.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, and I think I understand your concern. I just don't know that that would be something that we would be able to regulate through the Audit Committee policy. If that was something the Board was looking to do, it might be better just for all Advisory Committee appointees, and that could maybe be something you could explore later, but we're really just focusing on this provision, our limitations, and that, the concept of independence, we don't want to be involved in any of...
So that's not like the Code of Ethics is if someone got involved in, if a Board member, which is nobody here, got involved during a Board meeting, or any, you know, got involved in someone else's, in the spirit of the hot mic, campaign, that's an ethic violation.
Yeah, I think that with us, the independence issue is what we have, and we have to be very cautious and very concerned where I do not associate with any of the Board members.
Right, I agree totally with that.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying as far as the committee members, and I think that, as the counsel said, that part of the independence where they have to remove themselves, recuse themselves of a vote, I think that would probably, that's where they would have to sit there and say, I'm part of this person's campaign. If they're a vendor, I need to recuse myself from this vote. I believe that's where that would fall in.
Yeah, that makes sense.
General Counsel?
But that's not...
General Counsel wanted to step in, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going, I was just going to add in, since it was raised, that, you know, not necessarily just the Audit Committee, but potentially other committee members, I will throw out for food for thought, if that is something of interest. I'd really want our office to go back and look at that, because there could be some First Amendment issues involved there.
Yeah.
And then, would we be willing to assist in any research to advance that?
So recruiting themselves from the vote, or talking about Audit Committee stuff that potentially someone could win, or a seat, that, to me, doesn't seem ethical, but anyway. Line 615, accessibility to and cooperation with Inspector General and staff. Let me get you, tell me when you're there. Line 615.
Got it.
Accessibility to cooperation. So staff meaning who? Like, who's this exactly, when you say Inspector General and staff? Anybody in the office?
It would be, oh, the intent, I believe, behind this heading, which, again, this is not new language, was anybody who was an employee or staff member of the Inspector General's office.
And they should have immediate, complete, unrestricted access to all papers, books, records, documents? So anybody, administrative assistance, anybody?
Wait, we have standards that we have to follow prior to initiating an audit. There are certain standards. There's an audit plan that has to be approved, and they have to, certain, they list out what they're going to request, where they're going to make those requests from. For an investigation, we have to have a predicate, so we have to have something that was brought forward to us, so it's not just a matter of, I decide, I want to investigate this person here. There has to be something there. And again, we have to have a plan that's written out, it's all prescribed, what documents we're going to request, what they're a part of, and all of that has to be approved, and it's approved through the either Director of Investigations or the Audit Director. So when they're asking for things, it's all listed through, and all those are maintained as part of our accreditation and peer review.
So does it say that? It has to be for a, in that paragraph, as deemed necessary, perform investigative audit activities?
Yeah, the line 624, as deemed necessary in performing investigative, that's correct, and/or audit inspection review activities. And really, what's being contemplated here, just to give it more context, is we have an inspection program, and without going into the details of it, if some of our inspectors showed up to conduct a safety inspection, and they were met with whomever, a teacher saying, no, you're not coming down this hallway, arms crossed, doing one of these things, obviously, the appropriate, you know, protocol would be have someone, a principal, have somebody there, you know, assist with this process, but we want it to be made very clear that when the time comes for us to be able to meet our mission and to do our work, it shouldn't be infringed, it shouldn't be impeded, it should be unrestricted, you know? And as Mr. Ferguson mentioned before, one of the major concerns we have with investigation is either evidence spoliation or destruction, and that's where that immediate comes in. And there have been circumstances where people shred stuff, people will push delete, they will work on, and luckily, IT can help with that most of the time, but we want those things, again, pursuant to this section.
Okay, I have more, but go ahead, if you have it on this subject.
I do, sure.
Mr. Ferguson?
Just so the public knows, so none of your agents, none of your employees are going to be rogue agents. They do everything at your direction, or someone who you delegated to oversee, overseeing investigations. So there's no situation where somebody's legal assistant on his or her own accord is going to send someone to subpoena and say, hey, turn this over to me within 10 working days. That would be grounds for them to be terminated, based on what I've seen in this policy, right?
Right, and that's why the inclusion of, we want, we have to hold ourselves to a high standard. We have to be above reproach. And we have policy and the procedures for procedures and for procedures, because we love procedures. And we document everything. We keep drafts of everything so that we can show if I override somebody's decision, I have to justify it, so I can't just sit there and say, I'm the king of this castle and I'm doing this today.
A lot of people think that, right. So thank you for saying that.
And it doesn't work that way. And we keep all those drafts just to show that I don't have unilateral control. We have levels of review that it goes through from the auditor or investigator to the director to the quality assurance, then gets a legal review, and then my review. And all those are kept. So, and we document that, and it's all done either through auditing standards or investigation standards. And if I want to override something, I have to have a valid written reason to override an auditor's or an investigator's findings. I can't just do it because I don't...
So would we know about that, if you overwrote something?
I, oh, yeah, I'd have to put it in there, because they sign an affidavit stating that, you know, that this is, our information is true and accurate to that. And so far, you know, we have a lot of very heated discussions at times. The staff don't bow down to me. I've tried it, they don't listen. Yeah, it doesn't happen.
Full-throated.
And we do, we have the discussions, we go back and forth, and we roundtable things, and I, a lot of IGs destroy their draft copies with all the comments. I don't want to. I want to show if something's changed or has developed, we can show you exactly how it happened and who made those changes.
Okay, so the same for line 657, when it says, I'll let you get there, eligibility, again, inspector, in the middle of the paragraph, General Office shall have access to all financial and performance-related records for all services, but does it mention in there that it's for specific investigation?
They cannot engage in any activity that hasn't been approved. The staff have very specific, they fill out case activity logs, where they account for their hours. Auditors only follow the steps that are written out in the audit plan. Nobody's allowed to go out and do their own...
Just doesn't say...
No, it does. I...
I mean, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, lines, to answer your question, Ms. Branch, it's line 651, 652. And again, this particular paragraph is applicable to vendors, and it says right there, during an OIG investigation, audit, inspection, or review. So these sort of requests, you know, there's these obligations to provide access, that's always pursuant to some type of OIG activity. That's the new definition that we're using.
Okay, and then line 673, it's the second Roman numeral, number seven, says entity, is this an outside entity? In response to a request of the Office of...
Correct. That wasn't the intent, no. This is, this is that 10 working days that we were discussing before. We actually extend the 10 working days to our folks here, if they're, again, having, if it's a kind of record that they can't physically get to immediately, or...
So this is for employees or outside?
Correct.
We're not asking for anybody to create a document. These should all be records they already have. Now, have we ever cited somebody with this, because it's always been in here? No. I think we've had some that have gone nine months that I've been, we've been asking for records, and we have not cited that. But it, it's not something that we're asking them to develop. It should be records they have within their control.
But a good example, I think, is records they may have constructive custody of, but they've been put into dry storage, or what have you, you know, they might have to request them to have them brought back, and then that takes time, and we understand, but this 10-day provision, I don't know the genesis of it, but this is, this has been our, I believe, our office's policy since it was established in 2012.
Before we continue, did you want to comment on this, Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, because I think we're kind of, I thought, I thought I heard Board Member Branch has asked for clarity in terms of who the entity is. I think is whether it's internal or external, the point is you have 10 working days, because the very next Roman numeral you specify in case of an external entity's refusal, blah, 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 blah.
Correct.
It's 10 working days. I thought we talked about this 30 minutes ago.
Yeah, but that was for outside entity.
No, I didn't, I didn't read it that way.
The other one said outside entity.
Anybody who's under their investigation could be internal, external, I thought, when we spoke about it earlier.
I understand.
So to the extent that it's not obvious, maybe make sure that it's obvious, but in when I heard, when I read it before the meeting, even listening to the conversation between you all and Board Member Branch, it was obvious to me that anybody who is requested, who, from whom information is requested, you have 10 working days, which is approximately 15 calendar days, give or take a day, to get us, OIG, what we ask for. If you don't, then there may be some ramifications to that. Board Member Lane, what do you think about?
Can I ask Mrs. Whitfield if that's what she meant? If she meant external or both?
Of course.
So just looking at it now, I'm, it's just, I don't know that it means external, but it says any entity, so to me...
The other one we were talking about.
I think this is the only 10-day provision that we have.
Yeah, I... The other one specifically said outside entity.
The last one was that if they didn't within 10 days, then we could get a subpoena. I think that's where that reference was going, and we will not subpoena our own staff. The 10-day requirement has always been in place for both internal and external. So it's just, it's in red, because it's just been moved in the area. But I think the other one that we were discussing before was external, but it was basing on, that's when we're going to get a subpoena. If you don't respond within the 10 working days, then we have the option to go get...
Right, it said outside entity, which had nothing to do with this one, but that's why I was, that's why I was asking, I said, just the entity, that it's a employee...
In 673, it just says the entity on that line, not outside or inside.
Right, and I, yeah, I think that we just, it's kind of like the good ship Peerless. I think we're all kind of saying the same thing.
We don't know, I don't know what the good ship Peerless is, but I didn't go to Florida. I went to a real school, but anyway.
I'll take it, bring it, everybody, if you want to get it out now, go ahead.
Hey, Ms. Branch, do you have more?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Well, I just, I think that should be clarified, to be entity meaning...
To the extent that, yeah, well, no problem.
I don't think it should be 10 days for an employee, but I agree with her on that. Almost done. And then, line 742 to 777 are all stricken? I didn't know why.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked. That was language that was pulled directly from the Code of Ethics policy, for some reason, 3.02, and it was, it was a portion of the Code of Ethics policy that, again, relates to falsification and misrepresentation and everything else. I don't know why it was put in there. Frankly, if I was speculating, which I'm not, but if I were, I would say it was put there by mistake. So we removed it, because that language already exists in the Code of Ethics and really is not...
Okay.
I don't know what the intent was behind that.
I'm almost done.
No, take your time.
Line 778, letter B. District employees shall promptly cooperate fully with OIG staff by providing complete truthful and accurate information. Then, did you add including sworn and uns sworn statements?
That's correct, yes.
Was it not ever that way?
Well, what it was, was this. In certain situations, our standards for, that are promulgated by the Commission, Florida Commission for Law Enforcement, CFA, they require us to record and take sworn statements from people. Sometimes, when we'd get into a situation where somebody was, well, we don't, we don't want to give a sworn statement. Well, no, you need to give a sworn statement. The prior language said we would have unrestricted interview access, both written and oral, and what we've done is we've really basically tightened that up to align with our standards, saying that we need to take a sworn statement in this circumstance with the discretion, if the IG so chooses, or the Director of Investigation so chooses, we can make it uns sworn. Normally, that's based on logistics. If it's somebody that's out of state, it can only appear via Zoom, and we don't have a remote notary, that sort of thing. But that language, it's always existed, but wasn't as precise, and that's why we added it. And again, it's just aligning with our already existing standards we have to follow.
I think that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Hello.
You're done?
No, yeah, we can definitely move on.
Okay, so then it goes to Vice Chair Andrews.
And mine is short and quick. I'm just really concerned, and I'm so happy to have our Office of Inspector General. I think it's a great thing, but you know, we know you, because we sit at this level. Most administrators know who you are, but we're a big district. And down back on 735 for employee responsibilities, I'm just hoping that we're going to in-service our people here within the district, because, I mean, they're not going to holly read this policy, and you need to be proactive before somebody gets into trouble, or something happens where it says the first lines, all employees of the district shall be responsible reporting to the Office of Inspector General and observe known or suspected fraud, waste, abuse. Most people don't know that, and they don't know who you are. I would hope they know who you are, but they're doing their work every day, taking care of kids and doing what has to be done. So maybe you'll have a little handbook, a key guide, for people that could be in the schools, or out, you know, somewhere, so people can know who you are, especially with all these good changes. I think we have some good changes in the policy, that we kind of be proactive for people. When you got you, when somebody has had a problem, it's kind of late in the process. So as I listen to all of this, it's good stuff, but as we're talking about it, there's so[1730.62] So as I listen to all of this, it's good stuff, but as we're talking about it, there's so many different interpretations of what we think it is or isn't. So I just want to take care of the employees, that we give some support to them. Once we approve all of this stuff, kind of have a version that's going to be available for them, easy to read for them to understand who you are and what they need to do.
We do have pamphlets that we hand out on cares. We have a pamphlet on the Office of Inspector General, and we also have a pamphlet on whistleblowers that explains all of those. And that's something that we could put out, and I would like to get some posters done as well. Again, we've just been very fiscally conscious of trying not to do a whole lot, so, but we will.
Are they on, on site at the bus compounds and places like that? And if you're there, you can pick that up, and it's easy and read. And now that we've made these changes, it just needs to be modified because I'm in and out, but I just think we need posters or whatever, who you are, because I think it's too late when somebody has gotten into something and they didn't know that they had a responsibility. Mostly it's to the supervisor or principal, but now when we're saying you should report it to the Inspector General, they need to know who you are.
Ms. Michael, I would ask that you provide the board members with, each with one of each of those pamphlets so that they can see it. Mr. Ferguson, I know you wanted to say something.
Madam Chair, thank you. So there, there is an issue here in my mind on the dovetailing, or picking up where Board Member Andrews left off, to expect all our 20, how many employees do we have, Superintendent? 23,000 employees of varying educational positions in life to know what is an actual known or suspected fraud, waste, abuse, including misconduct. I feel like you may be setting some people up for failure in that regard. So my thought would be to say, where you have on line 736, observed and known and/or observed and suspected, because if you don't know what you're looking at, then how would I know to report? You may know, but this is what you do. This is your stock and trade. Like you said, you keeping track of all your edits and reversions. I mean, you're one on one in that regard, relatively speaking, compared to these 23,000-plus employees. So I would hate for somebody who is ignorant of what constitutes these different things to somehow technically get in the crosshairs of the OIG or someone else as well. So let's not make this harder on them. It's challenging enough day to day as it is. So if you observe it and you know it's wrong, observe it and suspect it's wrong, then fine. But if you don't know the hell, excuse me, the heck you're looking at, why are we putting people in these kind of so-called trick bags, as I like to say sometimes?
Yeah, and, and we've never, one of the things that, that's a very difference between an audit and an investigation. An investigation, intent is, is very key to it. A lot of times, we know that money is missing, we know that there's an issue here, but the intent, was the intent to steal the money? Or did they just not count properly? So we, we have never, I think, unless somebody's concealed an issue, ever charged somebody with that. But in cares, the manual, it does go through and tell the staff about reporting things. And I do think we did, we can improve on working with the line staff.
Didn't you just remove that obligation? Didn't you all just propose that we remove that from this policy by mandatory reporting of cares violations? I thought I saw that earlier, or earlier in the discussion, I thought that was said.
We removed the disciplinary provision.
Understood.
The up to, and we still, and I believe that the intent behind this, and I, I want to make sure that I understand.
Sure.
What you're presenting. The intent, the intent behind is just to make sure that people are not afraid or don't feel like part of their role is to conceal or otherwise, you know, secrete instances of, of potential misconduct. We want them to come forward, we want them to blow the whistle, for lack of a better term.
And what if they don't? That's another thing. So, so what? I see my principal or my CEO doing something, so what? And what are you going to, you going to spank me and suspend me now? What's going to happen if I don't come in whistleblower?
No, and, and what's happened in the past, this actually empowers a lot of people where they can say, I have no choice, I have to report this. So we've never actually sat and charged somebody with, you knew about this, you didn't take any action, unless it's like child abuse, yes, of course.
That's, that's way different than this.
Yeah, but it, we've, it actually empowers the staff to say, you know what? It's not like I'm trying to pick on you, I have to report it. And just because it's reported doesn't mean it ends up in an investigation, an audit, or, or whatever. We have, sometimes I think, you know, in an average day, probably half of the reports are things that are, are customer service-type complaints. So, you know, we do vet these, and we don't automatically start audits and investigations and referrals. So there is a vetting process behind this, and we don't charge people, you know, because a lot of times when they don't report it, something, it's because they're fearful. And, you know, they're afraid that they're going to be retaliated against, and I understand that completely.
So these, all, all initial complaints are anonymous in regard to, they don't have to put their name behind it?
They can be anonymous unless it's a strictly ethical complaint, and that's by statute where you cannot just do, you have to actually do a warrant. But we do take anonymous complaints.
Okay, so in that regard, going back to Board Member Branch's hypothetical, some, not really hypothetical, but the question that came up in my head, if there's a perceived sunshine violation at one of the advisory boards or something like that, you as a fellow board member or whomever would have to specifically say, I, John Doe, on this day saw Jane and Tommy conversing about something that was going to be on the upcoming agenda?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Okay, it, it would really depend on, again, the specifics of the complaint. Every complaint would be different, but.
That was pretty specific, I just said. See, these gators, they don't have big ears, they can't hear, all they can do is just make a bunch of noise.
The content of what, what had been disclosed, and did that, again, were you reporting it solely as a Code of Ethics violation, or are you reporting it as a violation of Chapter 1, 119, or the Sunshine Act? So, so those, there's, there's a lot that's part of that that we have to look at and kind of take apart, but I think.
I thought was that it would be ethics, but you're right, clearly that would be in violation of 119, too. So how, okay.
Yeah, but so.
If it is strictly just a Code of Ethics, it is that you believe that somebody is acting unethically, they're trying to use their influence, you know, that, that they shouldn't use, and there's not a policy or statute that falls under it, then that has to be sworn to, and you can't be anonymous, and that's done by Florida statute. But if there is a policy violation, we don't, we will continue with it if they're anonymous, if we have a policy rule or law that we can put with that.
Okay, all right, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Savietto, you're up.
Yes, so to go along with Ms. Andrews' said, I'd love to see a cheat sheet, right? And use AI, bring it down to our level, right? Because I have a lot of education, none of it is illegal. I mean, I have some, but I haven't done it. So just talk to us in plain language. Have two columns, you know, like IG Bernard, sorry, G, General Counsel Bernard did for us, the red and the green, you know, have two, the do's and don'ts. And when you do the do's, you know, or what is it that it means, or what qualifies as a complaint, then have an example. And then the don'ts, right? I mean, and then have a Q and A somewhere, and then have it, you know, Mr. Cooley can help us with the English and, in the Spanish distribution, and, you know, we set our employees for success. So we, we make sure that, you know, assume that none of us has any legal background, bring it to, and, and have a list of the most common ones, probably throughout the years. Can you see like a pattern? I don't know, maybe there is a pattern or not, but if you see a pattern, then those need to be part of the Q and A, and then they need to be part of the examples of the do's and don'ts with examples. I think we need, it's so easy to do, you've got AI, please use it, it's so much fun, too. And then I was going to comment about, you know, so you may know that if you belong to the canvassing board with the Supervisors of Election, they have some strict rules about, you know, you can't be part of any political campaign, and you cannot do this. So they have really good rules and regulations about, so maybe you can copy paste. I love why reinvent the wheel when it comes to, so you don't feel bad when you come to, you know, the county, and, because if somebody's done it, I mean, why even like do it twice or try to do it better? Grab what we need, and maybe there are certain language there that we can utilize or not. Maybe it doesn't fit at all. But I mean, they have really good, and, good rules about that they can, the person who's at the canvassing board cannot even go to a political campaign party, be associated in any shape, they cannot endorse. And so, again, that could be great language to see then you, because you're knowledgeable, where it would fit within, you know, the school district if, if it's at all. But I mean, I think that could be a great, and even talking to them, I don't know if that comes from the state, probably, you know? But if now you can talk to Supervisors of Election, you know, Wendy Link, and get some information about that, I think that's great.
Madam Chair.
But I would love to, I'm not, one second, Mr. Ferguson.
I'm sorry.
So then I love to see that do's and don'ts, and, or, you know, what, what is it, what is a complaint through your office and what's not a complaint in the examples, right? I mean, it's like people calling 911 because whatever, right? They need to talk, people do that. It's, so, you know, it's like the do's and don'ts of calling 911, the do's and don'ts of what your office can actually do or not, and, and then having that Q and A in the website. Too much information is not good, because you can have all these pieces of paper, and like you mentioned, you know, Ms. Michael, but sometimes just too much, people just don't read it. But if you have the right information with our language and with examples, so then people can follow along, go, oh, okay, I can see it. The language itself doesn't help unless you put an example, and that could then go, okay, now I understand, this is not a good one. Like you both mentioned earlier, I thought that that was genius, giving an example, because then I go, okay, now I understand. So I would love to see something like that, thank you.
That is present in the pamphlets, there are examples in there, in the pamphlets.
Do it visually, in a way that.
Yeah, and I will, and I will get to each one of the board members.
Don't do the blah, 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 just.
Before we go to Mr. Ferguson, so what I was going to ask Ms. Michael, I'd like her to give us those pamphlets, but could you just take a quick moment out to explain to the board members the training that you do? Because Ms. Michael does do extensive training around the district to employees, so.
Actually, just had, as part of the recent leadership summit, we had a really great ethics presentation with all the principals, and I'm going to brag, we did, we did pretty good, didn't we, Deputy Superintendent Wyatt?
And how'd that go over?
It was good. I feel like it went over really well, actually. I mean, maybe I'm biased, but.
No, I think it might help if maybe even offline, if they share some of what they do for employees with Ms. Savietto, because I think that there's more that they do already that, that we as a board may not be aware of, as well as their pamphlets. Mr. Ferguson, did you want to comment on that before I go to Ms. Branch?
I mean, we have to have a nexus in anything we do. Board Member Savietto just said people get overwhelmed by reading too much stuff. So like, for example, the canvassing board, remember back in 2000 when we had this business about the pregnant chasse here in Palm Beach County?
Yes.
Was that not the canvassing board that had to oversee the review? So if I got five people on the canvassing board in the bag that are voting for Ferguson, yeah, they're going to see whatever they need to see for me to either get the vote or not get the vote. So there has to be a nexus. I didn't think that the Audit Committee under any scenario would ever investigate board action. Did I hear that incorrectly?
No, no, do we?
That's correct.
Yeah, do we have independence?
So I just want to make that point, so there's no reason for us to even go down, that's not even a rabbit hole, we're just digging a hole just to dig it, like we got infinite amount of time here, like, let's be about the business. So whoever's on the Audit Committee, they could donate to any board member they want to, I mean, that's their business, I suspect. I mean, it's not like there's ever going to be a point in time where that person's going to be asked to call, to make a determination as to whether we did something wrong. You already said you're going to outsource that outside, you're not even going to touch it.
That's correct.
In that regard, so I just don't want us to get confused in that regard, as far as that goes. I, I did agree, though, that persons who are running, running, who are seeking to either be reelected or get on the board, yeah, you all shouldn't have any business with donating to them, because there's going to be a conflict as well, in my, in my, in my mind.
Correct.
But this other business that we've been talking about, I, I don't think there's a nexus there. And I just don't, and definitely not with the canvassing board, like, we really don't want to be anything like, that's, that's too, this is already a lot, 31 pages, we'd be looking at 61 pages, and 30 of them will be on things that aren't even relevant to what these boards and what the OIG's responsibilities are. So I would just caution us as a board in that regard not to get too far out there. Like, I think Board Member Branch, you caught a couple good gets here, Ms. Whitfield and Savietto did as well. But having said all that, there's no real nexus in a lot of the things I think we've been talking about for the last 30 to 45 minutes. And that's just my opinion, respectfully submitted, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Ferguson, because we share the same opinion tonight. I don't know what is wrong with us today, because we're agreeing on everything.
It's been one of those days, right?
More arrests, you seen more arrests, that's what's happening, yeah.
So, yeah, so we're agreeing.
Seven hours is amazing things for you.
Yes, and this is why I'd like board members to have the opportunity to see the flyers, hear what the office is doing, before we go down the rabbit holes, as Mr. Ferguson said. And that will bring us to Ms. Branch.
I do agree with what Vice Chair Andrews was saying about some employees don't have a clue, because I'm certain you know that people think you're looking for a power grab, and a lot. I hear that a lot from people, unrestricted, we can do whatever we want, we can get this, we can get that, so. Just FYI, I'm sure you know that already.
Yeah, we work very hard to, to disabuse people of that notion, that's, you know, part of this outreach, and I'll make this very quick, that we did last week.
They don't believe you.
It was, well, I, I don't know, I, I like to think that we're making some inroads, but, but we, we had a really, it was actually a very, I think the word that was used was lively discussion with the middle school principals, where they really got into it talking about ethics, and we provided some ethical scenarios, and at one point, this sort of happened organically, but one of the principals played the role of the defender of the conduct, and the other person played the role of the prosecutor, and it was really a great discussion, and all of a sudden, we keep kind of reinforcing that, guys, we're not administration, we are not OPS, we have nothing to do with disciplinary resources, it's here for you all. We want you to come to us with questions. We might not be able to give you an answer that you like, but we want you to realize that we're here, and to give proper attribution, we're here to point out the landmines. It's way better to do that than it is to point out the carnage after someone steps on one. And that's, that's really what our office is all about, we're, again, watchdog, woof, woof, but if we're barking and people are listening, hopefully we can avoid a lot of the harm that could result, so.
Okay, Ms. Whitfield.
Thank you. So one of my concerns listening to this conversation is a lot of these things that we've brought up, or there's a few things that we've brought up, that you've said, don't worry, we're going to not go after people. If we're saying, don't worry, we're going to go after people, that is specific to you two being here and all of us being here, and we remember this conversation, the policy outlives all of us. And so I'm, I'm worried that we need to add into the policy the actual stipulations that we should not worry about. So if it says entity, and we mean an organizational entity, we should write organizational entity. If entity is a person, we need to say person, because I'm concerned about the people that could potentially be caught up in this that aren't you, that are coming after you, that later on we say, well, we have policy that says we can go after a person, and I'm worried about our employees. Like, I don't want our employees to suddenly get a subpoena because they were out of the country for two weeks and they don't get a email.
We want, we want to subpoena our employees, I want to make that very clear.
Yeah. I have to, like, write that in there.
Do what that's.
I believe it is in there that we won't, that we do not subpoena our own staff, that that is part of it. And a lot of the unrestricted immediate access, we've always had that. That, that hasn't changed, that isn't something new. And in five years, I have not, you know.
And I believe you are a good actor in this. I'm just saying, as we're developing policy that now went from, we're going to call you incessantly after 10 days, to after 10 days, you get a subpoena. We went from annoying to really punitive.
Right, I want to, I, I think that we've lost something here, I'm sorry, just to make it really clear, as it relates to subpoenas and the exercise, that is only for external folks. We will not, do not intend, the policy does not allow us to subpoena.
And not individuals or just external organizations? External individuals could also be subpoenaed after 10 days?
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, and that's a.
Line 58 says what, what an external entity is, first of all.
Correct, we've defined it.
So wait, hold on, Mr. Ferguson, I'm not done. So 739, I feel like when we were talking about, it says line 79, "No officer, employee of the board or district shall threaten, intimidate, coerce, discipline, retaliate against, or take adverse personal action against anyone because they acted in good faith." So I also feel like maybe we should put in there, if somebody did not, like we've been talking about, does not understand, was not aware, I don't know how to, how do we say that, but I don't want someone to feel intimidated because they didn't do the cares report that they could have done. If, if there was, if they had knowledge of it, fine, then they should have done it. But I'm, I'm definitely worried that there's too much teeth in this, that there's so much that we may end up seeing, and like she was saying, an misuse of power that we don't want to see. So that's, that's a concern, and I don't have the language to fix it yet, but this is like, as we're having this conversation, these are the concerns that are coming up to me, that I don't want to make, I want to make sure that this is used for the purpose that I don't want to make, I want to make sure that this is used for the purpose that we are intending it to be used for, which is, somebody on the outside isn't doing what they're supposed to do. Not, "We've just scared our employees, and now they don't want to talk at all."
Right, and then we, and I agree, it doesn't matter how many times we say it, the policy outlives us, but we would also be eviscerating and undermining our goals, if we were, to use the terminology, going after people. That's not the role of the IG.
I don't think it is either.
And that's not, and a lot of the language, I think, that you guys are maybe finding objectionable, it isn't new, you know? So I just, I want to make sure that this is something that, it predated us. I think your predecessor, he was judicious about it. I believe we've been judicious.
Our standards, both in audit and in investigations, it dictates what, how, and when we initiate an investigation, what the, you know, the scope for an audit is. All of that is spread out, and if you, this is the CFA standards. This tells us exactly what we investigate, and that's why we put a predicate on there. This is the audit standards, which tells us when we can start an audit, what the audit is on, and it gives it all out. So besides this, which is forward-facing to everybody else, we have to follow these as well. So this all covers that, and then we have the Green Book, which covers the AIG, which, all other issues. And it tells us, so that you don't have a rogue IG going out there and just doing witch hunts, you know? And it's all prescribed in there, and in order for us to maintain our peer review and our accreditation, which they come every three years, and they look at, they look at how we started, when we started a case audit, what was it predicated on, and it goes through the whole, and then, plus the audit committee looks at it. And you all look at the reports as well, and we always put down how a investigation started. So it, and as far as the reporting, the mandatory reporting, that is something that's kind of universally done at every agency, every public agency. You have to report misconduct. They say you have to report misconduct. You don't want somebody covering up things. You don't want somebody who knows about an issue and waits ten years, and this is, we find a lot with whistleblowers. They wait until they end up in trouble, then all of a sudden, they bring out a laundry list of things. Well, you should have reported this earlier, you know? So that's some of the, where you, you know, you have that in there.
Okay, board members, before, I don't want anyone to say anything else. I just want to say that this is in development, and there's too many changes that we are making for this to be brought back to us as a policy. What I'd like to suggest is that those of you that have some concerns, meet with the Inspector General. Let's bring back another workshop with the changes, because a lot's been thrown out at you. I don't think it's fair for us to bring back a policy without us going through. We don't have to do that with the other policy, but I think if you're all in agreement, let's have those that have concerns, meet with the Inspector General, meet with Mr. High, come up, you know, with language that you can bring back to us, and let's workshop this again, instead of beating this to death, okay? So with that, then we're gonna move on to the next part.
I just had one question that...
Okay, Mr. Ferguson.
Because it wasn't answered. The reason that you don't, I'm assuming that the reason you don't have to subpoena district employees for district-related information is because you can just go to the respective departments and request the information that you need. So you don't technically need to subpoena them for that.
That's right.
And I assume that you would never subpoena them for non-district-related information as it relates to something that's district-related.
Absolutely not.
That's why, again, digging holes that maybe need not be dug. So in that regard, respectfully, if you, if you all are picking up what the board members are putting down, some of this could have been cut off a while ago, and that's all I was trying to say. So I don't necessarily know if there will likely be as many questions asked now that board members know that you don't need to ever subpoena a district employee for district-related things, because you can just go to whichever department and request what you need to request.
I thought I said that at the beginning. If I didn't, I apologize, but yeah.
You know, gators, they just make a bunch of crap noises. They don't really communicate so well, yeah.
No, that's, yeah, that certainly, but yeah.
And so, Mr. Ferguson, just so you know, you know, we've been trying...
He knows I'm messing around. My sister's a gator.
But just so you know, we've changed somewhat the format of our workshops to let it be more interactive, so that all of you can, it used to be so scripted that nobody, it was more like presentations to us, so this is all healthy. I think it's healthy, but I do think it needs to come back to us, and then...
But some things were getting lost in communication.
Yeah, but you need to make sure that we don't have any rabbit holes in it, please.
Oh, I mean, we got people elbow-fudding around here. Ain't gonna be too many rabbits in the holes these days. But, uh, yeah, it's good. Great presentation.
All right, thank you.
So we're gonna go on to fraud.
Fraud, last one. Fraud, fraud, fun fraud. All right, here we go. Two point six one. All right, again, what have we done here? We've, again, we've revised or proposing revisions to this policy to, again, prevent, detect, and investigate fraud, right? We've done this by reinstating the purpose, expanding the scope, and updating the fraud definition. And this is something that's, for lack of a better term, it's kind of stuck in my craw since I started here, and I'm very excited to be able to address it. But the definitions for what we call fraud really is more aptly described as fraudulent misconduct. It's a lot of different things. It involves bid rigging. It involves different types of material misrepresentations, bribery, all that sort of stuff. So initially, what we've done is we've added a better definition, we've added some better, more clear-cut examples. And we've also included the incoherent, or basically incomplete, attempted fraud. Because that's something we found in several of our investigations, that a lot of times, folks go, "Well, I didn't really get away with it. I didn't really get that extra supplement, so no harm, no foul." And if you were applying the fraud definition as it was before, it made it sort of difficult for us to be able to better, again, train, make folks aware, and again, detect and deter that kind of stuff. Because what a fraud policy, if it's effective, what it's supposed to do is say, "Look, these are the things that aren't allowed," and be as clear and concise as possible. That's what we've done. We've done that to assist management, employees, and basically everyone, in understanding what constitutes fraud and fraudulent misconduct, and establishing internal controls. So for our purpose, excuse me, purpose, what we've done is, we have, we've, again, whatever, we've added the term deceptive acts on line seven, all right? Part of what the, I guess, the textbook definition of fraud, not the definition we had now, it involves some type of material misrepresentation that you know to be false, that you're doing for the purpose of sort of tricking someone, getting them to rely on it, getting them to act based on your material misrepresentation. That's deception, right? So we've added in the purpose deceptive acts in line seven. We now say the board will not tolerate fraud, or the concealment of fraud, or the attempt to commit or conceal fraud. And I do have to give proper attribution to Kristin Vera Garcia in the General Counsel's office. She wordsmithed that, and I think it's spot on. Scope clarification, right? What we've done is we have also added charter school employees and officers.
Before you move on...
Oh, yes, sir.
I looked at this definition here, and obviously, we all know fraud's a false statement of material fact with intent to induce reliance thereon.
Right.
Mr. Ferguson would like to add as well. But here's what it says. It says, "Fraud is an intentional misrepresentation or omission of material fact, or other deceptive act." And I have problems with "or other deceptive act." The question is, here's my suggestion to you. I think "or other deceptive act" is hard to get your hands around. We don't know what that is. It's vague. My suggestion would be, and it's take it or leave it, but is that you've got a definition here of fraud, and you have another definition here of management. A good idea might be to include a definition of what you mean by deceptive act. As I'm looking here, a deceptive act is a representation or omission that misleads or is likely to mislead. You may want to use something like that so that people know what you mean when you say deceptive act. Otherwise, it's just a deceptive act more.
Right, well, we've provided, I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Lane, but we've provided, beginning at line forty-three, and I'm rather proud of these, we've provided a lot of specific examples of what we believe would constitute the deceptive act.
No, no, you said that these are examples of fraud. It says, "Under this policy, examples of fraud and fraudulent conduct include..." You don't include that from a... I would just look at your, when you go back to the drawing board, just look at that, and you may want to consider coming up with some definition of deceptive act, because for me, it's vague.
We can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Mr. Ferguson?
Or you could, to Board Member Lane's point, on line forty, "Under this policy, examples of fraud," and then the language in line seven that you just mentioned, counsel, "include that there, and fraudulent misconduct include." That will alleviate some of the ambiguity, so that people don't have to go to litigation to figure out what constitutes deceptive, at least you're doing a better job in that regard of making it as plain as possible for persons who, to Board Member Lane's point, aren't quite sure what you meant in line seven.
I thought of that also, but I think it might be a better idea to really define the term.
Okay, all right.
Again, no problem going back and doing that, just for purposes of understanding what we went through to sort of create this. Currently, under the, this is not a criminal policy, obviously, but under the criminal fraud statute, looking at jury instructions, I don't know if anybody wants to guess how many different jury instructions there are for fraud? Anyone? It's twenty-seven. So it's one of those things where there's really lots and lots of species of fraud. So it's well-taken, and we'll work on doing that. But we did put a lot of reflection into this, and we really based it, if I can, give you some examples of situations where we had a hard time under the old policy that didn't include this language involving deceptive acts, establishing a violation of the fraud policy. Circumstances where, and I shared this one with Ms. Morales in the General Counsel's office, an outside entity was running a employment verification as a lender, reached out to one of our employees, the employee took a letterhead, wrote out some information that described their working hours, location of work, everything else, to satisfy this outside inquiry, and under the existing definition, well, that wasn't really fraud, because there was no intent to deprive, unlawfully deprive the district of anything. But there certainly was deception, and there certainly was, when the time came, that the lender called her manager and said, "Hey, is this person actually employed here in the county? Does this person, you know, no, what are you calling about?" So that would be one of those examples where we're really, and they're about as infinite as, you know, what you can squeeze into the Grand Canyon, so we'll work on it. We'll keep putting in the effort. Either way, all right, so we expanded the scope. We added, I think I said, charter schools as well as district volunteers. Those two groups of people weren't subject to the fraud policy before, and we've added them. And we kind of just spent all this time talking about it, but we've added those examples of fraudulent misconduct and getting away from that idea of intent to unlawfully deprive the district. I don't know where that came from. I don't know that language. The only reference I could find to it is under the tax statute. It's, I believe, two twelve. I can give you the specific site to it. I haven't seen it anywhere else, at least here in Florida. So we really want to do away with that and focus more on the material misrepresentations and that deception that we talked about. Even if there hasn't been an actual loss, right? Even if you're just attempting to do it, or you're attempting to conceal an act of fraud. Those, again, examples that we've listed, previously just said documents, were now including letters, forms, contracts, or other records submitted by or on behalf of the district. That's when we get into interactions with those third parties, those external entities, whether it was the lender that was inquiring about employment, or somebody who is engaging in a contract with a vendor. We distinguish deliberate destruction from theft. We've expanded the fund misappropriation, financial misrepresentation to all schools, right? Again, just making sure that everyone is aware of the kinds of fraud that can be out there. The unauthorized disclosure of confidential information, that was something that previously wasn't addressed as robustly as it could have been. And then we gave all those examples, false invoices, falsifying grant information. And these, again, they all come out of audits, inspections, and, excuse me, audits, reviews, and investigations that we've conducted. Using deceptive practices to obtain services, collusive tendering, also known as bid rigging, misusing district credentials. From our perspective, all of those constitute different species of fraud that management, employees, everyone should be aware of and working to detect and deter. We updated the language. I'm really, I'm proud of this. We changed it from developing and maintaining to actually fostering. This is used throughout the policies, because we really want everyone to understand that as our world evolves, as more and more species of fraud come to light, you mentioned AI before, you know, there's gonna be more opportunities for people to engage in fraudulent misconduct. And we want to always remain aware, we always want to have buy-in from our stakeholders, and, again, the folks on the dais, to continue to basically foster a culture who are all aware of the need to prevent, detect fraud. We, again, added the term unauthorized and deceptive to lines one thirteen through one fifteen, that I believe involves confidential information. We've also clarified, again, whether or not, it doesn't have to result in some kind of loss or gain, right? You don't actually have to get away with defrauding the district enough for us to say that you've committed fraud. As far as management responsibilities, we've added some more specific language there, just so management is kind of aware, hey, you might not think of this as a principal, but one of the examples that we had was during an audit, the auditors came through and they were asking for either, I think it was proof of a contract. I think there was a vendor that had a bounce house or something. And when the school staff couldn't present the contract, right, in an attempt to basically avoid an audit finding, they reached out to the vendor, they backdated a contract, they signed it as though it had been issued before, and said, "Hey, look, we found a contract," right? That would be a very clear example of fraud. And I don't know that the folks, for better or worse, were thinking in those terms. They were looking to avoid an audit finding, but in the process, they committed a pretty clear act of a material misrepresentation that the auditors relied on, and it was really kind of happenstance that they discovered that that contract itself happened to have been updated, and the date on the contract that they produced was a new form that didn't exist at the time the contract was executed. So, again, those are ways that we find stuff.
Ms. Branch?
On the management, did you define management when it's stricken there or somewhere else, I think I saw?
We defined management up in the definition section here.
The very top? Okay.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. I thought I saw it.
Exactly. It's up there. We really don't have, I think, two definitions for this, the fraudulent misconduct.
Line ninety-nine. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Again, the reporting, the process, this just harmonizes with CARES, basically saying, if you're going to report instances of fraud, you need to utilize CARES. That's our, again, our centralized complaint assessment and referral system that allows us to best address it. And, again, if it's something that doesn't constitute fraud, or if it's something that is more customer service-related, or it's better handled at the school level, we can refer it to the appropriate department. And, again, this policy creates a detailed roadmap for management's role. We want to help management. We want to help everyone. Again, we really just stressed the need to adhere to internal controls, reporting suspected fraud, cooperating with the IG. And the big thing, and this was already in the policy, but we really wanted to drive it home, is if we do get a report of fraud that's credible, sometimes we want to make sure that in these instances where the fraudulent conduct, it's much like a police investigation. If we can prevent any destruction of evidence, or prevent anyone from being tipped off, you know, we'd like for you to refrain from doing any extra work until we, you know, get a chance to do our thing. Be that, again, an audit or an investigation or what. We clarified references to board policies. One point zero nine two is our IG policy. Three point two eight, which we'll get to do this again in a month, that's our whistleblower policy. So we made sure those were aligned. And we also utilized one point zero nine two seven, the definition and process for conflict subjects, which, again, is, that's all the folks sitting up here. And lastly, we reiterated OIG's access to records and premises, right, which we were just talking about. So I think that covers it, and, yeah, I don't know if you guys have any questions.
So Ms. Branch?
Line one ninety-five B, it says, "Are observed by or made..." It doesn't make sense, that sentence.
I'm looking to see. You said ninety-five?
One ninety-five B, "When suspended fraudulent unethical dishonestness is stricken," and it just says, "Are observed."
Oh, that's, and this was, I have to, I'll own this one, too. This might be a function of me not being really well-versed in utilizing strike-through, but that's a continuation of the line before. So if you read just above paragraph B, which you're reading from, "When suspected instances of fraud or fraudulent misconduct are observed or made known by an, made known to an employee, the employee must immediately..." It's just a format of the thing.
So the B shouldn't be there, then?
Well, and if you click on, I know you don't have a live version, but if you click on the mark-through on the right, it cleans it up. And I don't know how to make it look any different, but I can give you a copy where if you use the redlining tool to switch back and forth, you'll see that it is a complete sentence, and it just looks really weird, and I understand, but...
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Mr. Lane? Okay. Okay, so board members, we're going to, as you know, we're gonna come back with the policy number one point zero nine two. Inspector General, I'm gonna ask you if you want to work on the wordsmithing with the IG. Stick by that ten-day rule, please. Do it as soon as possible. I'm sure the IG would like to bring that back, and then bring all her policies back together, so we can expedite, hopefully, Ms. Sinclair, we can fit in that workshop as soon as they're ready. But please try and make it a priority so that all three policies can come to us together. And so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting. A motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Don't go anywhere. We now have to return to the special meeting. Let the record reflect that we have all board members still present in the room. Okay? Board members, we have two for six sets of minutes on our agenda. I will take a motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do not have any items to add for good cause. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, we do have one item pulled. That's P O L dash L D one. Any other items that we want to pull? Okay, seeing none, we now need to approve the agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any disclosures or abstentions? Seeing none, that's going to bring us to Superintendent and Board Member comments, and I hope you all keep them brief. Mr. Superintendent?
Just have one very important comment. Tomorrow, September eleventh, is National Day of Service and Remembrance, also known as Patriot Day. Schools will take time to reflect on a day that profoundly impacted our nation. It's a day to remember to thousands of lives lost, and to honor the selfless courage of our first responders. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of this day. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, and that would have brought me to the same comment, so I appreciate your doing that, and that's going to bring us now... And that's going to bring us now to Mr. Lane.
It was a very busy month, but I'm going to defer my comments until next week's regular meeting. Other than to say, I attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Mac Bernard Neighborhood Center this morning. It's a beautiful building and a park, which is a fitting tribute to our very own Sean Bernard's husband, Senator Mac Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Ms. Savayeto?
I am talking on my four minutes. So I want to take a moment to address the recent announcement from the state regarding vaccines. I know the district has and will continue to comply with all legal and regulatory requirements. But as a public servant, a mom, and someone who believes in science and public health, I find the latest announcement from the state to end all vaccines deeply concerning. Vaccines have protected children for generations, like Chair Brill mentioned earlier, you know, from serious diseases like measles, polio, and rubella. That protection is not political. It's public health. While I understand that families deserve choices, I also believe in responsibility. My son's pediatrician supports vaccines, and so do I, because they save lives and create safer classrooms. So for, to the fun part and emotional, as you saw when I talked about the Hispanic proclamation. So Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the culture, resiliency, and contributions of our Hispanic community. In our schools, we see this every day, in our students, educators, school staff, you know, and even within our officers, you know, police officers. And we have one right here, Officer Aleida Carvajal. Muchas gracias. She is Latina and she's protecting us. Muchas gracias por estar acá. Families whose heritage strengthen who we are. Education is the bridge that turns the pride into opportunity. And together, we're building stronger schools and brighter futures for every child. Palm Beach County officially kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month yesterday with a proclamation and the unveiling of a beautifully wrapped bus that will travel through our county. It was wonderful to join so many familiar faces for the celebration. The bus designed featured several leaders from our community, which I happen to know them all. And I was especially proud to see one of them was our own Latina teacher, Joseline Leon, from Belgrade Elementary. So, go District Six. She represents the very best of our educators and was honored as the 2023 Teacher of the Year. So there she is in the bus. Later, well, later in this meeting, now, we just already did it. You know, I was going to read a proclamation, and I did read a proclamation declaring Hispanic Heritage Month on behalf of the school district, highlighting the incredible contributions of our staff who make a difference every single day in our schools. And I got very emotional because even though I came as a teen, I saw my parents struggle. And all of us, regardless if we were born here or we came at my age or even older, we all have a story. And it was very emotional. Proclamations are more than just reading a piece of paper. So to continue with the celebrations, I invite our community to join me at our next school board meeting on Wednesday, September 17th, at 4:30 PM. We will gather outside on the patio right there for a short networking, just to talk and an opportunity before the meeting begins. Later that evening, we will celebrate with Florida ALAS, Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, at their annual Hispanic Heritage Month networking event. This year's theme is celebrate culture, build community, and strengthen connections. So we're going to be having a great time next meeting, after the meeting. Thank you to President Patricia Trejo for her leadership in making this possible. The event will be held from 7 to 9 PM at the drive shack by the airport. Immediately following the board meeting, we will be joined by community leaders like Deputy Mayor Susi Diaz from the City of Green Acres, Juan Pagan from the Florida Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Dina Rubio from Latin Quarter, and Abraham Segundo from Vision Latina Radio Show. Please reach out to Patricia or my office for more information. Gracias y festejar el mes de la herencia hispana. Unidos con alegría y esperanza. Celebremos juntos fortaleciendo toda la comunidad, construyendo puentes y manteniendo siempre el orgullo vivo entre nosotros. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Whitfield. Ms. Branch?
The only thing I'm going to say is we had a celebration of Thank A Teacher today at Calusa Elementary. Francesca Smith, who teaches the class of 2038 kindergarten. She was very surprised. Her room is called the Confetti Room, so she says it's kind of like confetti. So it was really a great event.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few comments. Not sure what order these slides are coming up in, but last month, myself, Superintendent Burke, and Chairperson Brill were able to go to S.D. Spady Elementary for the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Betty Harmon Warner Reading and Emerging Leaders Center. It was a great and well-tended event. There we go. Also, Project Uplift. We had a great turnout last month. We had over 42 volunteers. We removed 678 pounds of litter from the city of West Palm Beach. So we're at 888 for the year thus far and over 200 volunteer hours. Remember, our goal is 2,000 pounds removed, 1,000 community service hours awarded. So we're well on our way. I'll speak more about this month's event later in my comments. Also, we had our first Preparing Future Principals Program meeting. I think that was a week and a half ago. Since it was in District 7 at Lincoln, I had the privilege of speaking to these aspiring principals on leadership, things I think, characteristics I believe most great leaders have. And it was just a great opportunity to dialogue and get a chance to converse with some of our best and up-and-coming leaders here in the district. So I wish them all the best. Next slide, please. Should be, oh, yeah, I had a press conference with Congresswoman Frankel a few days ago down in the West Palm Beach Public Library, just in regard to the vaccine. So some of the points that were made by some of the other board members were echoed by myself and many of the parties who were in attendance. Additionally, I was at Lincoln Elementary two days ago because, as you know, we are going to, Lincoln unfortunately has to close this year so that we can help make way for the construction of the new Riviera Beach High School. And remember, we're bifurcating. The students who will attend West Riviera and Bethune Elementary, all pre-K through second graders, will be starting next year at West Riviera. Third through five will be at Bethune. So some of the parents had questions in regard to what that looks like for their students next year. So I appreciate Mrs. Taylor having the foresight to invite me there to help kind of allay some of their concerns, also encourage them to be as engaged as possible. It looks like the ABC meetings are going to be fairly interesting and engaged moving forward in that regard. So thanks to all who attended that event. And then we're back to our town hall. So I'll have a town hall on September 23rd, State of District 7. You know I do that every year. So it'll be in Riviera Beach this year on the 23rd and be down in Boynton Beach on the 30th. So those who are able to attend one of both, I definitely would encourage you to come out. It's always a very interactive meeting, and I think the community benefits immensely from having these type of events. Additionally, persons who are interested in learning more about African-American history and African history here in Palm Beach County, you see the attached flyer. Of course, I can't read it from this distance, but starting on September 13th through March 19th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, every Saturday, you can either go to Trinity United Methodist Church, again, the address is on the flyer, or the Spady Museum in Delray. If you're interested in registering for this activity, the information is set forth in the flyer as well. And then also ACT Prep. This organization's been doing some really good work. I've witnessed a lot of the good work they've been doing over the past three years. So any students who believe they could use an extra bump in terms of their ACT scores, I would strongly encourage you and your family to consider using this particular organization to help you kind of get across the mark in that regard. And then last, but most definitely not least, City of West Palm Beach in collaboration with the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, will be doing Project Uplift this September, on Saturday, September 27th, down at the waterfront as part of a greater community cleanup. This actually is our two-year anniversary, but we're going to have the big blowout next month. But all who are able, I'm strongly encouraging you all to come out on Saturday, September 27th to help us keep and make West Palm Beach more beautiful. And with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Andrews.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. This is my time to share with you, and it's so wonderful that we're everywhere as board members. So the City of Pahokee presented the proclamation for A-Rated Pahokee Elementary School and Pahokee Middle Senior High School. I don't know if that slide is there. It was fabulous in Pahokee. Great schools, great teachers, great kids. The Glades Youth Explosion with Reverend Lawrence, sponsored by the Southeast Florida Behavior Health Network, Urban Farmers, Palm Health Foundation, and the Federation of Families. All these young people were showing off, and they gave me an award for working with them from year to year. So it was an exciting time in Wellington. The Sheriff Department donated school supplies to Acre Ridge Pines Elementary School on Slide 3. They are always helping. We thank Sheriff Rick Bradshaw and all of the Sheriff Department for taking care of our kids. It was a fun morning. Also, at Acre Ridge Pines Elementary, we were celebrating Ms. Luna for 30 years of service with the school district food service department. It was so delightful to see her. She's been there at Acre Ridge Pines for 30 years. And it's just great that we celebrate our employees, especially those who are committed to being with us, and it is their life, and to feed the children and make them happy every day. Everybody knew Ms. Luna, and it was exciting. Also, I had a chance to go over to the Ron Clark Academy at Acre Ridge Pines, and I had a chance to spin the wheel, and it was lovely. I'm now a dreamer, a visionary. And Acre Ridge Pines, you continually do great work. Your principal is awesome. We love you so much. The children are so exciting. Take Stock in Children Back-to-School Workshop Series was held at Palm Beach State Belgrade Campus. And that's my new mentee. I was so excited to meet her. She's a ninth grader, and she is so excited to be a part of Take Stock in Children. She's going to college, everybody. That's what Take Stock is all about. Seminole Ridge High School Construction Academy, you saw it on the school district's website, the 11th House. I'm so proud to say that I've been to every house dedication. Thank you for the students who build the house at Seminole Ridge. You're awesome. You make a difference. You give people a chance to have homeownership. It means everything. And then I had a chance to visit Dr. Robinson at Royal Palm Beach High School. Noli Rodriguez is also in the picture with me. She drew that picture that I showed you last time, and I got a chance to give her some goodies for Hobby Lobby so she can continue drawing. And she's such a wonderful person. I was so excited. And then the last slide I have here is from Pahokee Elementary School Celebration. Celebrating that A, that A. The place was packed with parents, so proud of their children, so proud of the school, the principal, the teachers. And yes, you are great. And I was so happy to tell you, congratulations. We're going to be celebrating all year. And lastly, I'll be over at Seminole Ridge High School in the morning for the Junior ROTC, as we remember 9/11 tomorrow morning. I go every year. The Junior ROTC does a great job. We can never forget. We are so thankful for our first responders, for the families that were left behind, and for all of those that we lost. So we must remember 9/11. We shall never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Andrews. So board members, we do not, let's see, actually, we're not up to the agenda yet. That's going to bring us Mr. Superintendent to COM 3.
Ms. Brill, can I just, I forgot to say something, and it's kind of important.
Yes, that's fine.
One of our longtime teachers at Boca High, Ms. Barbara Martin, who's retired, she passed away. She touched so many lives and was truly missed. She was there when Dad was principal back in the 80s. She was a wonderful, wonderful teacher. And her husband Jim, who is also a retired teacher, it was very sad, but wonderful lady.
Well, thank you for sharing, and I'm sure that we will have a moment of silence for her at a later meeting. So thank you. So, again, Mr. Superintendent, that's going to bring us over to the proclamations.
Yes. COM 3, I recommend the board proclaim September 2025 as National PTA Membership Month.
Okay, motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
COM 4, I recommend the board proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month.
Motion by Ms. Savayeto, second by Vice Chair Andrews. Any discussion? For those that are out there, that's why you see some of us wearing purple. All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That will now bring us to agenda, item, topic, speakers, and we do not have any. So now I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that will now bring us to new business, BRD 1, the General Counsel's Annual Evaluation. The evaluation instrument has been completed by all seven board members, and the scores have been compiled and resulted in an overall evaluation of the general counsel of five, which is excellent. It's actually the absolute highest you can get. So I would like to recommend that the board accept and approve the general counsel's evaluation. Motion by Mr. Lane, second by Ms. Branch. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So congratulations to you, Ms. Bernard. Okay, and so that's now going to bring us to POL-LD1. Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend the board approve development of proposed revised policy 1.03 school board meetings.
Okay, motion by Ms. Whitfield, second by Ms. Branch. I believe, Ms. Savayeto, you pulled it. So did I. You go first.
Yeah, I'd like to revisit our recent decision under the policy 1.03 regarding proclamations. After further consideration, I believe they belong in our regular meetings, not special meetings. Our regular meetings are when the anthem is sung, the pledge is recited, and the greatest number of family, students, and community leaders are present. That's the moment when the eyes of our communities are on us, and that's when proclamations should be recognized. Proclamations are not just ceremonial. They are awareness tools. Today, we recognize suicide prevention, and it's important to know that more of our military service members die from suicide than in combat. We also recognize causes like drowning prevention. Here in Florida, we are surrounded by water, pools, lakes, canals, and the ocean. Awareness is critical because drowning is something we can prevent when families have the right information and resources. We had national, there are so many others, like National Hunger Action Month, where Board Member Whitfield presented, you know, she read it and presented it to the United Way of Palm Beach County. We have Holocaust Remembrance Day, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Veterans Day, so many others. And they provide moments of education, remembrance, and unity. These proclamations are not small things. They educate, save lives, preserve history, and strengthen our community. When proclamations are given in a special meeting, the audience is smaller. Like right now, there's nobody here. No one. Couple people, sorry, but, you know. The impact is diminished, and those important stories don't reach the people who need to hear them. Let's make sure the recognition we give is not only meaningful, but it's also visible when families, students, and the community leaders are in the room here. That's how we honor the causes and the people behind them. For these reasons, I respectfully ask to all my board members that we bring proclamations back to our regular meetings so they truly inform, inspire, and connect us as a community.
Okay, so I'll start off by saying I respectfully disagree, and I'll explain the reasons why. So the problem we have is that at our regular meetings, we do presentations. They involve students. We have students that come to speak. The students have to go home and do their homework. The special meetings are special meetings, and when we present proclamations, they go to entities. They're not going to individual people typically. I don't feel that it's any less important. The county commission gives their proclamations during the day. We start our board meetings at 5:00 at night. We now have the four minutes, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit. Keeping the four minutes, don't get nervous, but 28 minutes that we can use in the beginning of the meeting. That's going to be for our own comments and showing what we've done, which is not something that we originally intended to do. By the time we would get to the business, and also for the items that involve our students and our staff, to me, it gives us, by moving it to the special meetings, it gives us more opportunities to do a proclamation and present something. But what's been happening at our meetings is we're taking them out of order, and it is delaying the time that the students can get home to do their homework, that the parents who have very hot issues that they need to address with us don't have a chance to express that. So for that reason, we want to try that. Today was an atypical day. We normally start at 2:00. We don't normally have, I hope, any more exceptions hearings. You know, this was not your, this was not your normal meeting day, without any doubt. Typically, our 2:00 meetings, other than if we have our executive sessions, start pretty much in the afternoon. So I feel it gives us more of an opportunity to shed a light on these organizations. Also, all of our meetings are recorded. Also, all of our meetings are recorded, are televised, so people can see it. So with that, I welcome any other comments. Use your, please, okay, Ms. Whitfield up next.
Thank you.
You're working on my end, Mr. Ferguson.
One of the things that I like about the idea of doing it during the special meetings is the possibility that we could give a time certain to the people who are speaking and we're giving presentations to. I think one of the ways that we could do that is by making them the very first thing in the day. So if we are starting a meeting at 2:00, do our presentations, make it a standalone, or proclamations, make it a standalone, quick meeting. If nobody comes, boom, boom, we're done. But if somebody wants to be here, at least they know what time it's going to happen. Because I do think people would like to have that photo to be able to post, and so having the picture with the board, it gives people an opportunity to do that. Also, we don't typically let them make comments, but if it's during a special meeting, I think we could allow more comments from the people receiving the proclamation so they could have a minute or two to get up and speak and say, you know, here's why we think this is important. So I do like the idea of the flexibility. You know, if we end up going back to a regular meeting day, that wouldn't bother me too much either, but I like the idea that we could give this the attention that it deserves, and we don't feel so rushed on a regular meeting day.
And so I'm going to pass it on to the next person, but again, Ms. Whitfield, that should have been earlier in the meeting, but it was because this was an atypical day. So normally, we wouldn't have to suspend one thing to go to another to have the people come in. So Ms. Branch, you're next.
I agree with Chair Brill. It should be on the special meeting. I don't think people should be speaking on things. I think they're very important. It is live television, and I do agree with being at the special meeting. This is a business meeting of the School Board of Palm Beach County. I don't know how many other counties do proclamations. I think some do, but, and not that they're not important, we're not taking anything away from them, but I agree with them being at the special meeting.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there are about 23 people watching us right now on YouTube, and I say that just because normally by 6:45, there are less than 10 people normally in the audience. Persons normally come for the proclamations and then they leave, so, yeah. And I will note that in my time here, there have been a couple of instances where, you know, there have been some things that personally I wanted to discuss with the Board, but I felt that because it was getting, at least just reading the room late in the hour, the members thought it would be more prudent to take it up at another time. And some of that was due to the fact that we had two, three, four. Sometimes, no, I won't go more than that. I can recall having at least four. I don't recall five necessarily, but we spent a decent amount of time on proclamations that maybe their attention span would have been better able to be utilized on things, because, be sure, I can go another two, three hours, but I know that's not the will of the Board here tonight. So for that reason, just kind of always trying to read the room and understand that, you know, everybody, everybody has the right to do, you all have the right to be who you are, and I get that, I respect that. So it seems like the overall consent, and I'm part of that consensus as well, is that we do these proclamations on the special meetings because the agenda tends to be a lot shorter, and we can get on, we can do the business, whatever limited business we need to do and still get home at a reasonable time, get our rest, so we can be spry and bushy-tailed like the Chair Brill today. Boy, you were real spitfire today with the one-liners and all this type of stuff. I've been listening. I'm keeping notes, too. Don't worry, I'll get you one of these days. So, yeah, Board Member Savieto, I respect what you're saying, but I think just in regard to making sure that we ultimately do what we're supposed to do, which is the business of the district, I think that I'm in line with the group that supports us doing these recognitions on, at, and during the special meetings.
Vice Chair Andrews?
I'm in favor of doing them at the special meeting, but one thing I really do like, I like the little piece, if you do want to make a comment before you read the proclamation, because it may have a special meaning to you, and this is something we've been doing, and I think we should continue to have the right to do that for a minute or two, if there's something that meant so much to you in that proclamation, and you want to make a statement before you read the proclamation. I like that. So, and we've been doing it for the last few months, and so I think we should continue that, and when we're doing it at the special meetings, we do have time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, and that is in the policy as it is right now, and I do think it does give us an opportunity. There's many times when there's a proclamation when I would like to say something, which I haven't, so it gives us that flexibility. So I'm going to move to the reason why I pulled the policy, and the reason I pulled it is I do want to keep the policy in line with what we ask of the people who attend our meetings. So, for example, it's already in the policy, when we're speaking to Agenda Item Topics, we have to stick on the Agenda Item Topic. That's in the policy. We do have in the policy, though, one place, the only place we're now timed. You all put it on the board chair. Please, somebody help me with that, but it's on me when things go too long. So we're not timing comments by board members except for the board members' comments. And so if you go to line 60, it says that the board member comments, it's four minutes per member, which is fine, including the chairs, which I tend not to make comments because, again, it's 28 minutes if I do those four minutes. But it says that the timer shall not be used for time management purposes. The timer will be used, but the microphone will not be turned off. We turn the microphone off for the people that speak in front of us. So, you know, our speakers that come here, they get three minutes. I tell them, the microphone's going to shut you off if you go beyond it. It's four minutes for our delegation speakers. So I would like to, I'm going to give the, I'm going to give the gavel over to the Vice Chair because I want to make a motion to make a minor change to this policy that would result in our ability to have the microphone turned off only for the four-minute comments because I expect that of our guests that speak, so I need to expect that of our only timed piece.
Chairwoman Brill, would you make your motion?
So all my motion is, is if you go to line 61, where it says, "Note, a timer shall be used for time management purposes, but the microphone will not be stopped," I want to take out the word "not" so that it's going to read, "A timer shall be used for time management purposes, and the microphone will be stopped at the four-minute mark." In other words, exactly the same thing as we do for our speakers.
Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Branch. Discussion?
I have a discussion.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I don't support that. There's a conflation there. So you have, you have public sentences who come here, and if you don't cut the mic off, they'll keep going for 10 minutes. So for example, Board Member Savieto went 10 seconds over. I don't think we need to cut her mic because she was 10 seconds over. Like, let's not be that anal about this. Go think back to COVID. If you, think back to back then, we had the three-minute time. If you didn't cut a mic off, you might still be in that 2020 meeting right now for people talking about it. So we are elected, that is part of it, to let the constituents know what the heck you're doing in your respective districts. If you choose to speak, if you don't, you don't. That's fine, because all words aren't equal anyway. I get that. But I do think that is unnecessary, an unnecessary oversight of board members. If the Board is abusing that, i.e., we're supposed to be at four minutes and we just keep going to five minutes, five and a half, then I think that's a discussion that we should have at a subsequent board meeting, saying, "Now, look, everybody, we agreed to do four minutes, but you people are going..." What do you mean, "you people"? Yeah, "you people." You're going five minutes, six minutes, seven minutes, what have you. But I don't think, I think that's undermining to our position as elected officials, because, trust me, nobody else in Palm Beach County is cutting mics on duly-elected people, and no need to put the gentleman in the back in an awkward situation as far as that goes. I don't see us cutting Superintendent Burke's mic, not that I want his mic to be cut either as far as that goes, but I'm just saying, like, see the forest and don't be so time sensitive on the tree, because, anyway, that's why, that's why I guess we do the, do the recognitions during the special meeting as far as that goes. But again, I would, I would feel some way if any of you had the mic cutting you because you were five seconds, 10 seconds over. I'm like, come on, stop it. You know what I mean? So I get your intent in that, Board Member Chair, but I would strongly encourage us all not to do that. I think, again, I do think that's undermining, and I think Board Member Lane and Board Member Savieto probably more eloquently stated this a few months ago at one of our board meetings. But thank you for that, that moment to speak.
Mr. Lane?
I have nothing to say, but I agree with Mr.
They told me you were next.
I agree with Mr. Ferguson. Well, can I have 10 minutes to discuss this?
So before you go any further, I'll withdraw that, actually, if you can call on me because, since it seems to be the majority of the Board that would prefer...
I was going to suggest just do the bell so they know it's four minutes.
Okay, I think that's a valid...
You don't have to cut it off, and if they keep going on and on and on.
Do we need to do that as a motion?
Yeah, but this is, again, this isn't a show. This is a business meeting. Yes, we're elected. We should definitely be saying what we're doing, but I think something needs to be said, or a bell needs to be rung, just to let you know, because otherwise...
It is a little bit of a show, and we're not dogs, so...
Well, maybe we should start charging money. We can raise some money for the school district.
Ms. Savieto?
Yes, I totally agree with Mr. Ferguson, and I said it again. I was voted by my constituents. I have four minutes to say something, a few things. I prepare, and I went over 10 seconds because I saw official Carvajal here, and I wanted to mention her during my comments on Hispanic Heritage Month and highlight another, you know, employee of the district. But I usually time myself. I know, I told you that if I have 633 words, I make it under four minutes, you know, so...
You don't have to explain yourself.
No, but I'm just saying, so I've been very good at keeping myself, but I am not the student. I am not the constituent speaking, and it seems, everybody's so concerned about time. This is what we were elected for, to be here, whether, I mean, nobody wants to be until 9:00, but if we're conducting business and we have to ask so many questions to understand, to be efficient, to make sure that people say, "Well, she's thinking through, not looking at her clock or her watch," or, you know, we have to make sure that we look and we are professional here. So I would never, and I promise, abuse that four minutes, and I knew I was coming short by looking up. I probably lost two seconds by just looking at my timer, but, but like, again, you know, you, Ms., you know, Brill, have the opportunity to ring a bell, or, you know, if you see...
I don't have any bells, I'm sorry.
But I bring you a soccer whistle, how about that? But again, you know, we definitely, we're adults. We should prepare ourselves so we don't, like, ramble, blah, 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 you know, for five minutes. I put a lot of work into my four minutes, you know, to make sure I'm efficient, I'm under the time. I cover almost, almost, because I can never cover everything I do a month. Sometimes I have to say two months later. So please, you know, again, this is just crazy. No other governmental institution does the timing on elected officials, and this is our time to work. We got elected to be here, whether people like it or not, at what time, whether we start at 5:00 or 9:30 in the morning. It's not about the county or us. It's about being efficient, be able to talk through everything and understand it, not because we're rushed, "Oh, my God, you know, I better not ask questions because now it's almost, what, 8:00?" That does not fly. So thank you, Ms. Brill, for withdrawing what you just said.
So, Ms. Savieto, I just want to share with you, you were not here when those four minutes were created. They were never created as a show-and-tell of what school board members are doing. It's fine that it is, but what it was intended for was more what Mr. Ferguson does, and what, you know, when he mentions different events in his area, the different events that he's doing, it's not, it was never intended. Mr. Barbieri had brought this up in the past when it started to move into that. I don't have a problem with that. You know, I personally feel like if you're out in your community, your community knows you're out in the community doing this, but when you have a thank-a-teacher or something special, so I use it more in line with what it was created to be. I don't have any problem with people having pictures and showing what they do if that's important to you, absolutely. What I was trying to do with that comment was strictly to treat us the way we're doing it. Well, no, so Ms. Bernard mentioned the bell. I'm not going to do the bell. I'm going to ask that all of you please be aware of the clock. Please, you know, we're all adults, you know, just let's make sure it doesn't get abused. And when we have conversations tonight, I think Mr. Ferguson would have liked me to cut off the workshops, you know, a little bit sooner, but...
No, 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 no.
I think, I think they need to, I think that's our opportunity to really hash things out, but I withdraw it because I do not want to offend you. It's not meant as an offense. It was really meant to align us with what we expect of our speakers. Ms. Branch, you're next.
I, it is a business meeting, and for us to talk back and forth about the business of the school district is absolutely we should do. The four minutes is totally different. That's what I'm saying, it's not a show. And just be cognizant of the time. Everything else, we should absolutely debate and talk and, you know, figure things out, but as far as the four minutes, it's, I agree with it being timed.
So that's going to bring us back now to this motion. I withdrew my motion. So we're back now at the recommendation and the prior motion, so is there any further discussion? We're now adopting the policy as it is written, okay, with no changes. Mr. Lane?
I have a few...
Oh, for development, I'm sorry.
A few things that I'd like to bring our attention briefly. First of all, I have to acknowledge the godfather of our general counsel, sitting at our table here, Mr. Harris. It's a pleasure to have you. Thank you. I'd like you to look at line 118. It says, "Members of the Board may request the scheduling of a special meeting by requesting, preferably in writing, that the superintendent schedule a meeting on a specific matter." And then if you look at 120, it says, "The superintendent would send out a notification to the board members." It should say, "The superintendent will then send out." I think that's what the intent is. It's not a big deal, but it, it just clears it up. Moving on to 171, it says, "The purpose of the workshop meeting shall include to acquaint the Board with background information." That sentence is not a sentence. It should say, "The purpose of the workshop meeting shall be to, shall be to acquaint the Board." Instead of the word "include," it would be "be." That's not a sentence, and we're a school district. If you move to 209 through 215, it should be written in the, it's written in the conjunctive. It should be written in the disjunctive because it's, it's A, B, C, or D. And that ends my comments.
Good catches, Mr. Attorney. Okay, Vice Chair Andrews, did you want to say something?
I just want to follow up with everyone with the comments, and I just really do appreciate, I've been sitting here for almost 16 years, and I'd love to hear you tell us as a Board, because we don't get a chance to go with each other, and when we have this time, I think we have to stay timely, because I'm a little long-winded, but I am, but I'd like to hear it. It means so much to me to hear what you're doing in your district, and what, and so it's important, and I know it was a little sensitive with, you know, stopping the clock and all of this and that, but I think we have to continue sharing what we do, because this is why we're here, to share with the public. It's good for me to hear, but there's so many people listening to what we do, and they know that we take our job seriously, so, so that's what I want you all to know. It was a good discussion, and we have to continue doing that. It's not a show, it's good stuff.
Okay, I don't see any more comments, so I think we're, now this was, we're going to vote for the development of this policy with the changes that Mr. Lane has identified. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So that will now bring us to our board discussion item. Mr. Ferguson, it's yours.
Madam Chair, I put this on the agenda before the, I didn't realize we have a workshop next week, so in lieu of that, we don't need to discuss this issue. I was going to request that we set it for workshop. Superintendent Burke has already said it now for workshop next week.